Good morning. We are going to call the morning work session of the Clickateck County Board of County Commissioners to order. We are going to begin with our public works director Gordy Kelsey.
Morning.
Good morning. I have a couple items on the consent agenda. The first one, item number two, probably needs a little explanation, but several years ago, we started a process to acquire, entered an agreement to acquire property west of the fairgrounds, forty acres, and another piece of property at point nine, three acre piece on the other side of the fairgrounds, the east side where the parking lot is. And in lieu of that, we've traded three acres, three plus acres up off a Hockter Road that was the site for an old gravel pit.
Can we use that?
No, no. And, and then some. No, it's not a good source. Yeah. So, and then there's a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars as well. So, all the money's been, or a hundred and eighty thou- yeah. All the money's been paid. Now we're to the end where we're trying to close. There were some requirements to fence the property, to survey the forty acres. And now we're in the process of getting the quitclaim deeds signed. So, we're quitclaiming our interest in the point nine, three acres and then the other party will quitclaim their interest in the parcels that we'll acquire. So, we're down to the final end and.
When did we start on this project?
Twenty ten, I think.
Why did it take so long to get here to the?
Um, probably need to have a conversation with the prosecutor on that. Yeah. So, yeah, but we're here. That's the good thing. So.
Why are we, why do we want to land on the side of the fairgrounds? Is there plans over there? What's going on with that?
Um, at the time, the, the board was looking at potential for expansion in the future and the property owner was a willing seller to do that. And so, there was some trading and, and cash that took, changed hands to make this happen. Um, the agreement, actually, that all the money didn't change hands for about eight years. So, it took, that's the way the agreement was established. So. So, it's been a process, but I think we're finally there, which is good. So, anyway, that's, that's on the agenda just to kind of bring you up to where we're at because it, it's been a long time in the works.
Yeah, when, well, at least when I saw it on the agenda, I had no idea what that was about, you know?
Yeah.
No history, no knowledge.
Yeah.
So, thank you for the update.
Yeah. Um, item number three is a request for a waiver of fees for use of the indoor arena for indoor riding this winter from the Goldendale High School equestrian team. It amounts to three hundred and twenty dollars for the season. And that's.
Having these conversations before, can we do a fee waiver or does it have to be a fee reimbursement? Remember our conversations from months ago?
Yes. I mean, I guess we can seek, we're doing it the way we've always done it. Yes. There was some questions raised about our ability to waive fees.
I don't think it was a question on whether we could waive fees. It was a matter of whether we could waive the fees before they've gotten the bill. If you have the bill before we waive the fees.
They have to get the bill or pay the bill?
They have to get the bill. In other words, we can't waive the fees unless the fees have actually been assessed, is my remembrance of the way that is. So, yes, we can waive the fees. We have that right on anything. We just don't have the right until they've actually got the bill was the way I, until after the project, kind of thing, I guess. After they waived the bill. That was my understanding of that. Because I think there'll be another ask later today for same scenario.
So, they, the applicant fills out the form which has the fees assessed on the form. And so, they've technically been given what they would receive as an invoice to pay. And now, they've signed that and now are asking for a waiver of those fees. So, I don't know if that meets their requirement or maybe it's something the PA has to weigh in on.
I just don't want to get cross eyes with the PA.
Yeah, we can hold it off another week and have that discussion and then come back. Yeah. Yeah, because my, my recollection is there was a larger kind of global discussion about can we even, do we have that authority, which I have, I have an opinion. Yes. We're allowed to cancel debt. So, how is that? And I think that was the like.
The timing.
Right. As far as like, I, you know, here's the bill. Once they get a bill, I don't think we can, we can proactively waive before we, there has to be, we have to be able to cancel an invoice. Yeah, I would say that's basically an invoice that you, they've gotten the bill and we can, we can cancel, we can waive it, but. We'll make sure.
Yeah, we can check.
Yeah, we'll check. Okay, no pay approvals this, this week. Um, on the construction side still, we have to work with the contractor and the PA's office to resolve our out of spec asphalt on Roosevelt Grade Road. Courtney Road, the contractor is installing guardrail signing and erosion control before we get weathered out and tidy things up for the winter. Then that'll just mean paving and striping.
Did we get all the rock home?
Yes. I think they're, they might still have some spotting in, but they're, they're there. Yeah. Uh, the parking lots, we're paving the second lot today. And then I think we have all the patching will occur tomorrow. So, we'll finish all the paving and then hopefully if the weather cooperates on Thursday, like they say, we might get it striped. And then have it ready for use for the winter.
How much more rain could we get before you couldn't be paving?
Um.
Close to on the line?
It'd have to be quite a bit.
Pretty saturated, yes.
Yeah. So, so far, so good.
Yeah. I think we'll make it.
Yeah. Should I, I had the experience of after the ninety six flood and they were rebuilding and they, they paved one of those, and it wasn't us, it was a contractor paid. And it snowed that night on it. So, I'm like, wow, you've got it.
Pushing it.
Pushed it. Because they were trying to get it because it was going to be the same thing as that we were gonna, and that, you know, is old highway aid. It's a major arterial and it's like, well, we're just happy to have a road again, but it would be nice to not have a gravel.
Road all winter.
Winter on a major arterial. And they, they got it paved, but it was, so it was, it was late November, early December. And it did, it snowed. It snowed on their paving job. And it, it's still there today.
Yeah.
That was, yeah. No, the, the asphalt is still there. So. Yeah, in two thousand and eight, we paved Snowden, that lower piece of Snowden Road in mid-November. So, it was, we pushed it then too. And it's doing fine. God, that was two thousand and eight.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. Couple of years ago.
Starting to feel like a dinosaur.
Yeah. I just remember the mud. Because we either got somewhere, I don't know, there's something happened on that lower, like we got a bunch of rain or something and it was the.
Lot happened on the lower.
On the lower piece and it was just really, it was like, it was like slimy and people, like people were getting stuck.
Yes, they couldn't.
And it wasn't like we closed the road. You, it had to be reopened every day.
Yeah.
And the school buses were gonna get stuck. It was, yeah. Yeah, that was a, that was a scary project to get it done.
Yeah, it was a big job.
It was a big job. A lot of traffic. That's, that's one of the busiest roads in the county. Yes, it is. That and Loop Road.
Yeah.
Okay, um, still on the design side, still pushing for a Rock Creek Bridge to get done this winter. Sundale, we're working on the preliminary alignments and the federal safety projects for next year are all underway and should, shouldn't be a problem for an early add with those. On the maintenance side, both crews are providing people for the paving, hauling mix. And then after they're done, they'll go back to grading and hauling sand and getting ready for winter. So, which might be here next week in some areas. Uh, let's see. This facility, we're nearing our one year warranty walkthrough. So, that'll happen on the tenth with the contractor. We still have some punch list items they need to complete as well as the HVAC repairs. We're also installing a, what's called a low ambient kit for the chiller and that'll allow it to provide coolant on those really sunny days where we get that, the heat from the windows. And it'll balance out the cooling or the heating system. Sometimes they, they both have to work. And so, this allows the chiller to operate at lower temperatures outside. So. And then we still have a repair for the HVAC units. I think we're gonna actually look maybe at a, an outside contractor to speed that up, get those repairs done and maybe for a lower price too. Uh, let's see, Pioneer Center, all eight units have been installed there. They're gonna commission them here this month. And so, that'll allow us to look at the controls and control those HVAC units from a cellphone or a PC. All of the units we have will eventually have controls and the ability to do that. So, that'll happen. Uh, no change on the water line?
Says pass, we're finalizing the add. So, that should be coming up soon. And a quick follow up on the water line, you wanted to follow up on the archaeological piece of that. And I talked to our consultant and yes, it got changed with the new governor's order. Um, the tribes, they've changed it to a federal, basically a federal. And with, when it's a federally funded, the federal agency does the consultation. They don't allow the consultant to do it, which works well for them because they have archaeologists as on staff. We don't, but the tribes have taken that. So, what the consultant said is that's a legislative thing. You guys could take it on, but you, you won't win because DHAP says you have to take that up with your legislators. It's what they recommended because you're gonna, you know, ultimately somebody's gonna have to put pressure on DHAP to change that. And the governor's office sees it as he's, as they see it. So, that's where we are today with, with that. So, we'll follow the process. We do it on the FedA jobs. It just lengthens the process now on the state funded. Our funded projects, we still don't have to follow that rule. But if we're using state funding, so any RAP dollars or anything like that follows that process now. The consultation, they have thirty days to respond. If they don't, then you go back to DAP and you move forward. Just the Fed agencies don't, after thirty days, they don't make that call. We get to though, so far.
On our or on?
On the state projects because we're the lead agency then.
Okay. Because in the past, you know, because a lot of times thirty days is a very relative term. And like it's not, I mean, we've seen that before where that number is not, is more of a suggestion than a, as far as it can go beyond that, that it's not, you know, the thirty days expires, you still, if there has not been the interaction, it's like, well, you get another thirty days and then another thirty days. And it's not really thirty days. But on the state dollars, since we're the lead agency, we can say you had your thirty.
Yeah, we, here's.
We're moving on.
Exactly. We've submitted it.
It's good news as far as, you know, the assumption.
Yeah. And what you're doing is, is you're asking if a survey needs to be done.
Right.
And so, the typically, I said, what happened? I asked what, in cases where the tribes haven't responded. He said, well, then DAP will just say you need to do a survey. I said, why do we cut to the punch? We just do a survey, we'd be done. Ah, it doesn't work that way though.
Okay.
So, that's that. Um, the commerce, I talked to the grant representative or my contact over there to get more information. And she said, well, you have three options.
Beautiful.
One, I could, we could just do, you, yes, you have to have the planning grant in place to do any construction. So, you could do just the planning grant. That's option one. Option two, you could submit two grants, the planning grant and.
Construction.
And, no, and the design grant for, for Dallesport. And third option, which I told her this makes, she agreed. You could, I could, we could submit them as one grant, the overall county grant and then Dallesport with that as like a second phase. That gets really convoluted because of the regulations with the grant. Because you, they, they basically, it would give them two maps. And I think that would give them the opportunity to kick the grant out. Because they look at diversity. They also look at something which may or may not help us. And I asked her that and she goes, well, stop complaining. You'll get a lot of money. I said, well, yeah, it's not the point though. Because one of, there's a couple regu- there's a couple rules on there that got slipped in. One, if you've received a grant within the last ten years, you don't get points. If you haven't, you get an extra two to five points depending on how long. If you've never received a grant, you get the five points. Also, of course, then they base it on, you know, people of color and it's the diversity thing.
Okay.
So, I can wrap the one up for the countywide is that, I think, pretty easily. And I could, you know, we could do two, at least then, you know, it's up to you guys. You guys tell me what you want to do. We could do two. That way we've at least, not that I want to do the extra work, but we fulfilled our, what we told the people at Dallesport, we would try. But again, that's your guys' decision.
So, I'm assuming we're not, like, we're gonna be disadvantaged in any future grant applications for if we don't actually have our countywide park plan or.
Yeah.
But it seems to me in some ways we're trying to put the cart before the horse, that that seems like the first step is to, if we can get funding to do, I mean, that, that comes with certain concerns of mine too, is that once you've created this park plan countywide, then you have created a certain expectation as far as that, that this is gonna get done. And, you know, how, how confined can that plan be?
That's a good question. And I've talked to Mochi a little bit of this and, you know, I'm not the expert by no means. I'm not a planner. And Mochi's, you know, kind of, you know, I was mainly asking for a ballpark, what it would cost to do this plan to get a consultant because, and I asked, then I asked them, the granting agency, you know, do people, do agencies usually get a consultant? They said, no, if they have, the smaller agencies do unless they have a, a planning staff that has the capacity to actually do it. Because it's, you know, a pretty drawn out process, the process is Commissioner Christopher kind of related to for what the city's gone through.
The city kind of had the advantage. They already had a park plan. It was just highly outdated.
Okay, that's, that's.
So, it was more of a, let's look at the old plan and see what we want to change.
And that was still a lot of work, right?
No, we had three meetings, I think. Lori Anderson was sitting on it too, if you want to.
Okay, I'll pass to her a little bit.
And it sounds like she sat on the original one fifteen years ago kind of thing too.
So, I guess my, my thing is, is, you know, if you get one shot for the extra points to get to five points, do we want to do the park plan, attempt to do the park plan countywide internally? And then push for the grant for the design?
Yeah, I, I don't know. It's a good question because, you know, I'm not a planner. We don't have any planners. I mean, Mochi has some people, but I don't, you know, she's, I know she's pretty strapped for time. And you can still apply for the plan at Dallesport to do the design. I don't know how competitive it is. They may kick it because we don't, I mean, not kick it, but they may, you know, we may get, not get as maximize our points because they may go, okay, well, they don't really have a plan. So, we got the, we got the cart and horses still in the stable. So, they may do that. They may not. I don't know. It just depends on how many people they get in. If we did, if we go down that path.
I mean, how do they know we don't have a plan?
Well, they, well, they, they ask.
Oh.
That's part of the grant. I looked at the grant. That's one of the grant applications.
Sometimes it's don't ask, don't tell.
And they ask you to submit the plan.
Oh.
Yeah, and we, we tried already.
That's why Goldendale updated theirs is because I saw.
That they really couldn't.
This was a problem. Um, so, yeah, I started pushing them back in March or something to update there.
Yeah, we looked at the, the boat launch in Lisle. It's been several years.
Yes.
And that was the, the hindrance for a must. They're like, well, do you have a plan? You know, because there's money for those kinds of things available with a match, but they won't consider you without the plan. So. It is something you need first to get grant funding for things.
From Congress, yeah.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you're saying that if we applied as a county for this money for building the plan and planning the park, that's too ass and they may not give it to us.
Well, they may not, or they may give us one, which in that case they would give us the overall plan, I'm sure, if that's the way they want. They would give us the plan because they know that's the, the first step. There's the possibility of getting two grants. That's not, that's usually rare. I've only pulled that off once or twice. It's pretty rare that you get two. I, again, I, I totally leave it up to you guys. I'll do whatever you want.
Yeah, the, I think the, the countywide plan is a pretty big task because we're not just talking about a park in Dallesport, but everything. So, all the, we have a, an old paths and trails plan. We have all the potential for boat launches. So, this is a big group of recreational users that will want to weigh in on it. And it'll be a, a pretty sizable project for somebody, whether that's our staff or we hire a consultant to help.
What exactly did we tell Dallesport? I mean, because they're on, you know, they're on the marching path. And if we don't apply for design for them, they're gonna say, well, you're not doing what you told us you'd do.
That's right. We could do both. And then we've at least.
Different with me, I would, I would apply for, I guess I would say both, but I wouldn't characterize it as two projects. I would characterize it as this is phase one of the project, the planning. And phase two is actually looking at that park. Uh, and then, yeah, I mean, we are where we are with who they choose based on their criteria. I think this is gonna be very competitive.
It'll be very, because there's no match.
Exactly.
And it's up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
There's a lot of people that don't have their plans.
How much money is there available?
Two point, two and a half million dollars.
Not very much.
No, it is two, because just, I just strategized a little with Mochi. And for our planning grant, if we hired a consultant to do it, we're kind of estimating, I would ask for at least a hundred thousand dollars. Because, you know, by the time you have all the community meetings and you're drawing up all this stuff, it's probably a, you know, we're kind of estimating around a nine month process.
Yeah, because I guess if you're gonna do it, you're gonna have to have regional meetings in each kind of areas. And you are gonna generate a lot of interest. And, I mean, I'm, I can think of things in the West End with the, you know, the rafting community wanted to have a discussion about the, ultimately, the, the Pacific Corlan. Yeah, well.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's possible or a, but they will want that. They're.
With Goldendale, there wasn't a whole lot of public interested or pushing or what have you, but that's because there's a plan in place that really covers all the parks and the trails and which ones will be upgraded and not. And here, everybody's gonna want to get their pet project on the list. And, yeah, so I do think it would be more.
I just, I just worry about how do we manage expectations of folks across the, I mean, it's, it's the same thing you always have when you have, launch any kind of planning process. It's the wish list of, and then that has to get sorted down to, those are great ideas, but that's not possible. We're just not.
Right.
We're, it's highly unlikely we'll ever get there and don't, you know, you don't, let's not, it's the same thing with the six year road plan as far as like if you, you can get, you know, we're, we're not gonna be paving roads that have three people on them that are, you know, have a.
Right.
Yeah, you know, a daily traffic count of five. It's just not, it doesn't mean it's not okay. It's like, yeah, I'd love to, but we're not, we're not Skamania County in the eighties where they pave people driveways because they, oh.
Money and money.
We got all this money. We gotta spend it on something. So. Could we, uh, how, I mean, what's your opinion? I think it's highly unlikely that we will get funded for, I think it's competitive to even get funded for the planning thing, but I think we, that's at least, you know, even odds as far as that, because we don't have one.
Right.
And that, they should be prioritizing counties or jurisdictions that have no plan at all versus an updating, I would think.
I would think so too, but.
But my question is if we, for, to try to, I don't know, I would rather have the difficult, honestly, I'm, I'm talking against myself. I would rather have the tough conversation with the Dallesport community about the realities of, you kind of have to have this before you can go for this stuff. That doesn't mean it's not important, but you have to versus put a thing in. My concern is if we put things with both in and we have phase one, phase two, or whatever we do, by doing the big ask, does it erode, is our likelihood of getting anything for the planning grant?
It's possible.
Or would they look at it, you know, like, we can give you, you're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand for, um, the plant, countywide planning grant and a hundred and fifty for design. Or I'm just making the numbers. If it's, two fifty's the max.
Uh huh.
You know, would they say, yeah, you asked for two fifty, we can give you a hundred and we're gonna, we think the planning grant is obviously the most, or are they gonna look at it and said, geez, you greedy, you're getting nothing.
Yeah.
If you had asked for fifty for planning, we would have probably gave it to you.
And that's kind of exactly what I think is gonna happen because I don't, even though there is two and a half million and you could get up to two hundred and fifty thousand, I, I would wager that nobody's getting that amount.
Right.
Because there's a lot of, you know, baby chickens at the trough. I think asking for a smaller amount gets you a better chance of getting it. But even if you just ask for a hundred for the planning, I wouldn't doubt it if they only pay fifty.
Yeah, they might only give us.
Because there's gonna be, you know, forty five people that they have to give something to. So, divide that number by forty five people and.
And some people are gonna come with match.
Yes, there might be some people. There's, because there is a budget piece of it. I wasn't planning on coming with match because there'll be a lot of not, the, the thing that makes this difficult, it makes it tougher for me to get a read. You can usually get a read pretty good because I've been doing this long enough by looking at the agencies that are involved.
Right.
Problem is, is they've opened this up to the nonprofits. And now that opens up a whole bunch of people that I don't know anything about or, you know, what, what's the size and magnitude of some of their stuff? Just when I was on the consultation committee, I heard from a couple of the nonprofits that there's one nonprofit in Seattle that's like bike, bicycle paths for us or something. I don't know. That's not their name, but we'll call them that. And they, you know, their plan is to build like five hundred miles of bicycle trails. And they need a plan for all this. So, I'm sure their ask is gonna be pretty sizable. Again, and I don't know who's gonna be on the committee because they've kind of kept that pretty hush, hush on who's gonna actually make the determination on this grant because it's brand new.
Yeah, I think saying that, I think we should just apply for the countywide planning grant.
And I would say, you know, honestly, doing this, I think it'd be easier, and I'm always speaking. And I would say, you know, honestly, doing this, I think it'd be easier, and I'm always speaking for, you know, me and some of the people that work with, be easier for Public Works to go out and work with the people at Dallasport, actually, you know, draw up a plan and then go to construction at once we had, you know, go for, uh.
So just basically do design, do.
You do the design in-house. And you know, maybe bring on an architect, or I'll call architect to stamp the plans or something, you know, finalize some of the stuff. That would be, that'd be less of an ask, I think, and we'd have better ability to do that than doing the overall plan, I don't know what's your thought?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And my, my understanding of this, of the actual RCO grant itself is when you do apply for the project of building the park and putting in the playground, that RCO grant can be um, designed as well, it's just easier to get that grant if you already have the design. So you can incorporate the design into the grant you apply for in twenty twenty four in the next opening. Um, as a one solid ask, hey, we want to design and do this, but I would recommend that they do the design beforehand because I think that is a better chance of getting it. Yeah, no, I agree, I, I mean, you can't put turd for the horse, it doesn't. Um, having them tell us no on the grant because we don't have a plan is kind of a waste of potential opportunity.
Right. Okay. Because you all are going to have to manage this as far as. That, if, I mean, if we're successful.
I think the expectation.
That should be, that'll be fun. I mean, it could be really fun, but.
Yeah, we'll be volunteering.
Yeah.
Definitely needs to be managed because, you know, we're, I think when we started, we were thinking a park with some grass for some kids to kick the ball around and it may be a playground and they want a lot.
They want an entire city park that's better than all of our other incorporated communities.
They, they want more than that.
Well, you can want what you want.
Right.
It's, it's aspirational.
Our camp sites and, you know, uh, camp posts and.
Yeah.
Um, it, it went the whole nine yards, and that's what you have when you have the citizen involvement that they had. Um, everybody's got their own little niche that they want in the park, and that's what we're going to find with the park plan is everybody's got their little niche that they want in the park plan. Uh, and then they'll be sitting up there once a year complaining because how come you're not moving towards achieving uh, what we put in.
Well, and that's why I think the park plant, the, again, you can have all the involvement, but you, we need to, the plan needs to be something that's actually is feasible, achievable, and get that out of the way at the be, not at the beginning. You do the big sort, you do the scoping, you do all that stuff, and then it all gets filtered down to here's the five things that we, that there's actually, don't, don't, there's a reason we don't have four hundred and twenty seven things on this, and that's even aspirational.
The, the city, the city park plan pretty much just went over, for the most part, uh, the stuff that's already there, the, the parks that are already there, the trails that are already there, and then kind of talks about small things like, you know, we would like to extend this walking loop from here to here.
Right.
Uh, but it didn't have a whole lot of
Like really detailed.
What I think we're going to have um, with everybody wanting money to fix something or to build something or to whatever, the expectations were not there because Golden Dale obviously doesn't have the money to do that anyway, so. Yeah, no, I, I would just apply for the, the planning grant.
Cross that bridge when we come to it, as far as if we get it, then can kind of design the, what's the process going to be?
But maybe, maybe by having a larger park plan, you can then set the expectations for that, each community on what's feasible by looking at the larger plan. And that might be the right direction to go because what I was sitting was not feasible for a commute, for, for a community of that size.
No, just maintenance, the cost of maintenance.
Yeah, I asked them that when they, I said, okay, how are we going to maintain this, this is huge, how are you going to maintain, how are we going to maintain this? I said, you got to volunteer, you could pay a host, he said, no, it's not what I'm asking.
You're adding more costs, right, that's more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it for our list.
Thank you, gentlemen, any questions?
No, I did pass on the DOT contact information.
Okay.
Wild folks, so I said.
Yeah.
Here you go. Call him, schedule, I said he, it seems to indicate he would be willing to come again.
Yes.
And have a discussion with the community, so they were, they were thrilled because they were just starting, because they didn't know who to contact, so.
Okay, Dave's the guy.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, gentlemen. All right, next up, we have adult probation department for an update on the opioid settlement agreement. You guys just keep walking in.
Good morning.
Good morning. Let's, let's give it a minute and let him come back in. Okay, I'm down. All right.
All right, so I'm here on behalf of adult probation, and I know the district court judges, um, were hoping to be available today. Um, to be, uh, present. Our ask is to address the opioid settlement agreement funding that the county should be receiving shortly. Um, we're asking that, um, the commissioners consider delegating some of those funding to adult probation. For, uh, two reasons, to, um, be able to provide those deliverables to the county, um, in its entirety. And, uh, also to assist in, uh, adult probation's casework, which does fall under some of those deliverables. So it's kind of two folded, where it will actually help us, um, internally with our numbers and our staff, um, but it also will provide those deliverables that's needed for those fundings. Um, so our ask is for a hundred and ten thousand, um, a year to be able to pay for the salary and benefits of that one full-time employee, uh, to provide those deliverables. In review of the, uh, of exhibit A of the opioid settlement agreement, um, opioid abatement strategies, um, we believe that, uh, we could be able to provide a number of different opportunities for individuals, so, uh, one of the things I wanted to address is supporting and reimbursing services such as MAP programs and treatment for, uh, by the providers. There are, um, a number of individuals that, uh, fall into a bracket where they don't cannot get state insurance because they make a little bit too much, uh, but they cannot afford paying for private insurance or their work does not provide them insurance. Those individuals have to pay for treatment services one hundred percent out of pocket, and that is extremely, that can be very costly to them. And so then they become stuck in this kind of area of like, well, how do I get help? And there's just really, especially if they're on the, um, on active probation, they can't go to just any provider. So, um, we would ask that some of that funding be able to, for us to be able to assist them financially to provide that service, to get the help that they need. Um, and then what, the, uh, full-time employee would be responsible in, um, obtaining the assessment packets, um, helping them fill out the assessment packets, going through any type of screening processes. And this is all kind of in the thought process of the current situation of, uh, the agencies we're able to use. There's a lot of barriers with, uh, getting into treatment, um, and not everybody is capable or, um, should be expected to be able to, um, be able to provide or, um, fill out those packets. They might not always be in the right mind or the state, you know, their education might not be up to par with the application processes, so, um, we will sometimes, um, get those applications and explain how the processes work, but we don't really have the time to sit down with them to do that with them. Um, this is something we could provide to the community, um, whether they're on active probation or not. So if an individual needs some extra handholding and getting through that process, we could provide that, uh, with this funding. Another request would be, uh, we would be able to provide, uh, case management to opioid use clients, um, or at risk of opioid use clients, uh, to get access to, uh, treatment, sober support meetings, recovery navigators, um, WOGAP and trust for housing and employment. Essentially be like a resource center for any individual in the community. Um, we could provide them, uh, weekly check-ins to help with sobriety, uh, as well as bi-weekly or monthly, depending on their, like a graduated system, uh, depending on their, uh, compliance, I, I guess you would say. And, um, we could potentially, uh, assist with, uh, funding for transportation. So if an individual wants to go to inpatient treatment, um, but they don't have, uh, family support to get them to say Spokane or Vancouver, we could help them line up transportation. Uh, sometimes we have, we'd have to get them to, uh, the Dallas to get on a Greyhound bus or, um, to Yakima, I think is the next closest place, uh, for a bus to get to inpatient treatment, sometimes that's a huge barrier for the individual as well. So essentially just trying to, um, eliminate those barriers so that they can get the, the help and resources that they need. Um, also, I'd like to be able to provide, um, the spurt screening, so spurt screening is, um, uh, evidence-based, uh, program and a lot of the, uh, substance use counselors are already doing these. I'd like to provide this screening process for, um, anyone, um, in and outside of adult probation. So CPS might want, um, their individuals to do a, a spurt screening. Essentially what it is, is like checking to see, um, is there a risk um, of opioid use or any other substance that may need to be addressed further, so much like, um, a drug test, they do, initially will do a screening test to see which ones are hitting positive. And ones that hit positive, then they do a more thorough test to really see if that really is the issue. So this is just kind of a, a, a quick overview screening to kind of go, okay, yes, there's an issue, we need to address it, or no, we just need to do a little bit of intervention, just some, a little bit of education. And so I would like to be able to provide that as well to the community, um, and it is an evidence-based, um, program that, uh, is also outlined in the opioid abatement strategies. And then last, uh, under section D, it talks about, uh, supporting pre-trial services that connect individuals with OUD to evidence-informed treatment and related services. We do a lot of the pre-trial monitoring with the district courts as well as the county superior court. I would say a, a good handful of those clients, um, are OUD clients, um, or at risk of OUD, and when you, when I research what is at risk of OUD, is anybody that, um, has access to or has been prescribed prescription pain meds. So essentially a lot, everybody is at risk of OUD because it could be misused or abused at some point in time. Now, um, I tell a lot of my clients, um, you know, don't, don't get drugs off the streets. A lot of them are currently being laced with fentanyl, um, unbeknownst to them or not, I'm not sure. But, uh, that now makes them at risk at OUD as well because fentanyl is, is an opioid um, and is extremely deadly, um, as we all know, so, uh, the pre-trial monitoring services, they could, this individual, uh, with this funding would be able to, uh, eliminate, um, a lot of, um, pressure on myself and Steve to be more focused on the actual active probation cases, and then the pre-trial can be monitored by, um, this other individual if they meet those criterias of OUD or at OUD, at risk of OUD clients. Um, and with that would be, um, also providing in custody and out of custody MRT programs such as seeking safety and codependency. Um, a lot of addicts are codependent on their, their drugs. And, um, seeking safety is a lot about teaching them safety coping mechanisms. So what I found in my sixteen, seventeen years working here is that um, addicts tend to resort back to their drug use based on something, some kind of traumatic event happening in their life that's triggering, um, fear or, um, some kind of emotion, and they don't know how to deal with that emotion. So they go to, what do they know, and that is to self-medicate temporarily, you know, handle that. Now, if we're teaching them inside the jail as well as outside of the jail, like here's practicing these, uh, techniques and, uh, skills to, uh, not go back to that. Um, I feel like that can be a really good use of the funding and, uh, and tools and setting them up for success out of custody, a lot of times you have resources in the jail and they're amazing, but if they're not followed up out of custody, then what's the point? Uh, you know, uh, we have an individual that was just out of custody, just came out of custody and they had an MRT program. And he was like, I want to continue this program, where can I do it? And unfortunately, nobody's doing it out of custody in our county right now, but that is something I think that we need to address is like having that continuum of care. It happening in, in custody and then that way they can follow through out of custody as well. That is a synopsis of my request. Um, I don't know if you guys got my packet that I filled out. Um, it has a breakdown of the funding, how many hours a week they would be, uh, be providing each service. Um, and then, uh, what I, uh, anticipate, like the cost of some of the drug testing and sweat patches, uh, as well as the program books and the training, which, um, there's only one training that has to be done and it's a one-time training because it comes, it comes on a CD-ROM so we can continue to use it and train others. Uh, which is really nice because, um, then it's not just one person that's trained in it. Um, other people in the office can also be trained and use in fill in the gaps if like somebody, if that person is out sick or on vacation, we could be able to continue that.
Questions? I have, I have to, go ahead, this is, this is, this is up your alley as far as the.
Well, yes, it is. Um, I, I don't have any questions, I would just remind the board. Um, and anybody listening that this is, uh, state opioid settlement money that was given to the state via a class action lawsuit with the opioid manufacturers. Um, we did, this county did sign off on that agreement, uh, a couple of months ago. Uh, the first year, which is this year, starting in, I think it's first part of December, the county will receive a rider, right at five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and then, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year after for seventeen years. And granted, I said five hundred when it's probably four ninety-seven.
Right.
And I just want to make sure everybody knows.
Two fifty when it's two forty-seven.
Change. Uh, it, that's very close, yeah. Um, and, and part of this to me is we look at the amount of money that we spend on opioid abuse, um, in the court system. Um, and the amount, amount of man-hours or woman-hours that it takes to go through these claims and cases. So when adult probation, uh, wanted another employee to help with workload, this is why I recommended this program because I would, with the dollars spent on this, I would rather have county oversight um, than to pass through these funds, uh, to a side organization. Because then we don't really have the oversight on what they use those. because then we don't really have the oversight on what they use those funds for. And it could be on things that we don't necessarily, that we think there's a better scenario. So to me, if we're earmarking half of these funds towards this position, I would also kind of like to see, not asking for it, I'd also like to see half of these funds earmarked for more of the opioid mental health issue. So, you know, maybe that buys an additional person in the new mental health department to work solely opioid type stuff, just throwing it out there. Anyway, no, I am, I am in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for reminding me that, because I had written down with a big question. I don't know where I got $185,000 a year in my head. So you think, so that actually makes you feel a little better. It's not, I'm, I'm in support of this. I think this is a good thing. Kind of a larger question though about, you know, your, your clients that you would be working with are through the criminal justice system.
Correct.
Opioid use is not limited to only folks that are in the criminal justice system. I mean, there's, there's folks that have all kinds of problems that, you know, for whatever reason, aren't ever going to be in the criminal justice system. And so that was the, is there a way that we can, and I don't know what that is as far as to get them access, you know, that we, we share these resources out across the, the system, you know, some in the criminal justice system and some outside. And so that does.
And I did, what I did, and maybe I didn't mention it out loud, but part of our, our offer would be that we would be providing these, some of these services to CPS or other K, other P agencies that might want to referral, refer them to us to do this like SPRT screening or the other MRT programs that we'd be able to provide them at free to cost because it would be funded through this, this channel. And so I didn't want to limit it just to individuals with, that fit into that category of the criminal justice system. I wanted to be able to offer that to, maybe John Doe just wants help and he doesn't know where to go. He can just walk in and ask for help and get screened and, because he heard about it.
So what I, my question would be in a situation like this is if we are standing up a behavioral health program and now are you, is this person going to be doing behavioral health program stuff and then making that, blending that line of where to go? If we have a SUDP person in behavioral health?
What do you mean by blending the line?
So, so if you have, you know, your person's doing, you know, things outside of probation and we have the behavioral health program over here and as Commissioner Christopher was saying, you know, helping pay for a SUDP person or someone over there, and then you're providing outside of probation services and they're providing maybe potentially the same thing. Now you see where there could potentially be confusion amongst the public.
Well, we would not be providing treatment, right? So substance use professional is going to be providing assessments. They're going to be providing intervention tools and treatment services, getting them to bed dates. We would not be able to do that. We're not licensed certified SUDPs. This person would just be doing the, the screening to see if this is an area of concern. And then we would be referring them to a SUDP or an agency that could assist them. So if they were to, let's just say hypothetically comprehensive just goes away, like they close out and we just have the county behavioral health agency and that's the agency the court can provide the, send their referrals to, then we would say, okay, because you have a court case, you have to go through this agency. However, if you're not a court-ordered client to do anything, you could go to KVH. You could go to these people. We would be able to at least give them some kind of direction and then help them through that process. Because not just saying like, oh, here's a piece of paper with your information on how to get help. That's kind of, that in itself can just be a barrier for them because they might not be able to do that on their own. They might need this, somebody to say, do you need me to take you up there? Do you need me to help you through it? Will that make it easier for you? Let's make a phone call. Those little things are, are huge for some of these individuals because they are, they're struggling with such a huge problem that if we send them out with just a piece of paper and say, okay, just make a phone call to, you and I made, that might be easy. To others, it's not. It's like, well, I can't, you know, I don't have a phone right now. How am I going to do that? It's, you know, there's a budget snow out, whatever, I'm, I'm done. I don't want to, I'm not ready right now. So I want to make sure that if somebody is wanting help and getting, is getting that help to them as quickly as possible while they're in that moment of being ready. Because when they're ready and we can't get them the service, they give up pretty quickly. They're like, what's the point of even trying? Nobody wants to help me. There is no help out there. And that's what I want to try to stay away from. There's just more success if we can, we can help them in that early stage.
Well, and I would imagine that you guys have already built a rapport in a trust with a lot of these people that may want to come back to your program as opposed to just showing up at some AA meeting as a random person. There's that continuation of, of care or treatment that I think is important.
Which is huge is, in my belief of why we have such a low recidivism rate is because we, there's a difference between punishing somebody and then showing them that they, that they have, they can have hope and that they can do this and have that support when they have somebody that's connected to them and has that essentially like a relationship with them. They don't feel like they're doing it on their own anymore. And that connection to them is how they are able to keep going, even if there is relapses, you know, if they do stumble because it's inevitable. You can't tell somebody who's been an alcoholic for 10 years, like, okay, quit drinking today. That's not realistic all the time. There is going to be slip-ups because until they get treated, until they get the help they need, they don't have the tools to get better.
Would you see it more, because I do, I understand where Commissioner Anderson's coming from, where there could be confusion, where people are not sure where it's supposed to go. But I could see, you know, you know, where it doesn't really matter where the intake is happening that I would, you know, that you would get them referred to, you know, once we have our behavioral health and that's where those resources are. But maybe, you know, your, for whatever reason, again, I'm, I'm more focused on the, which maybe it's going to be nobody, I don't know. Like you're, I think you're going to have plenty to do with your, your normal adult probation, criminal justice referred folks. I don't think you're going to, I don't think this person is going to be, you know, looking for work where somebody off the street. But if they did, because maybe it's a sibling or a friend or somebody that they're like, you know, you need to go down and talk to them there, that I don't see that as a bad thing. Where the, the referral can take, you know, like you said, you're not going to be providing the treatment or any of that. You're going to get them to the appropriate place where they, and maybe without that, they wouldn't seek that help at all.
Sure.
And so I see it, you know, because what limited understanding I have of like the healthcare system in Oregon, because I had a family member that their, their system is, like you have all of, you know, you have your primary care and you have your mental health services, you have all these. Any one of them is an intake for any of the other services that they get them. Like if I'm seeing my dentist and I, and it's like there's some either medical health or even mental health or anything, then they hand you off, you're like into the system and they refer you to where you're supposed to be. And so, because maybe they noticed something or I said something.
Sure.
And so, so I, I think it can work. I just, I do, I think we're going to have to be, because we're not really set up like that. And we're, although I think that's the future, is that kind of those wraparound services that everybody's going to have to refer people to where they're supposed to be who's kind of got the expertise in the right thing. But we don't need dual operating systems that it's like, oh, I'm getting my services over here. And it's like, no, we don't have enough resources as it is. We need to keep them, everybody needs to stay in their lanes as far as, and in their area of expertise. So.
I agree. And, and my hope is that with this, if we were able to do the SPRT screening, that that would be accepted by any of the other providers because they're, they're the exact same criteria and screening questions. So it should be accepted interchangeably. So if we did the screening assessment and gave them their assessment and their score or on the, I shouldn't say assessment, the screening results, that should be accepted at another agency. Hopefully we could be able to provide, have like some kind of internal local agreement that they would accept that so that the individual's not having to redo those, those screening or intakes. And it would kind of ease a little bit of the caseload for others.
One, just follow up. Have we, have we had analysis as far as this proposal as far as? I mean, it seems to me like it meets the criteria of the settlement, that this is an appropriate use of the dollars. Has anybody besides us in the room actually looked at it and said, yeah, yeah, I think this is fine? And what happens if it's not?
That's, well, right, but that's, that's next step. So the one Washington memorandum that I sent to her, it use, or usable sources, it's like 50 pages. I mean, it's anything and everything you can even imagine that has anything to do with opioid is covered. I mean, for the most part.
When are we expected to get to 500?
December 1st, I believe.
And have we budgeted that in for next year's budget?
It is not in our budget because as of now, I would, would just figure it's going in a generally type thing. That's the discussion that we need to find out if it's got its own. We have to create a fund to put it in there. And then these things are taken out of the fund.
I expect it, just because it's a dedicated revenue source that has strings onto it. It's probably got to sit in its own pot.
Before we spend said funds, yes, it would.
You would have to.
Why is that we got a, a legal, you know, the appropriation? But also looked at by legal to make sure that.
We wait till the first audit, we're good.
So, yeah, no, this was not my intention to just approve things without going through legal, but there's no sense sending legal 50-page document along with her request if the board was not in concurrence of going forward.
So when would you see the potential hire taking place? January 1?
First off, we would, I would assume we would have to have some conversations with the attorney and with the treasurer and with the financial person to get the fund set up so they can put them in the right spot. And ideally, sure, would I like January 1? Yeah, but everybody's pretty darn busy with the behavioral health thing, so. I don't know.
Okay, so, because I'm, I'm just trying to create this timeline in, in my head because the last conversation we had about the opioid, I thought we were going to try to get a community stakeholder group together to figure out where to put that, prioritize where those dollars are going. This is just the first person to come to the trough. And I think that's, it's absolutely, you know, one place that we should put this money. It can do a lot for probation and that population and that will support our behavioral health program and everything else. I just trying to understand what you would like to do with regards to, are we going to bring together a committee or a group to talk about that fund in totem?
That would be up to the board. I mean, that was my, my first initial response because I'm sure there'll be many people with their handout. Because darn near any nonprofit in this county would qualify for pass-through for their pet project. But then I don't necessarily have much control over their pet project. So I would, I would like to keep these in the county budget and the county employees so that we can control what they're spent on to where we think they'll do the most good.
And then my other question would be is, is where do the cities come in on this as well?
Cities don't qualify because they don't have enough people.
Right, which, but then big cities qualify, they get money.
Yeah, you have to have, I think 75,000 people or something.
But the cities are also a part of the county. We provide probation services to the cities.
I mean, I say, this is doing everything for everybody in the county, so.
And so I just.
So the city folks would have access, I know you're.
The same access as county folks.
County folks, so.
So I just, I just wanted to put that out there because I don't want to disenfranchise the cities, especially when, you know, we provide probation services to them and they might have an idea where these, these opioid dollars should go as well.
Yeah, and I think, and again, I don't think though that this, we're not, we're not obligating all of them, about half of them, and that that's the one that you, you have the conversation with the cities and the general public about. Because I do think there will be some people that have some ideas and that's, that's great. And it's, but I, I think, I think for, I think this is an appropriate place to obligate, you know, half of the resources. And it's not, and like anything, it's not forever. It's not a, you know, if it, because it, maybe something comes out of it after a couple of years that it actually is a better fit somewhere else. And, you know, you can see, so. But it is, it's rare to have a guaranteed funding source for 17 years.
Yeah.
So that's, that's nice.
It is.
I don't think there, I was a little worried about that because if you're going to do January 1, you could, I was just thinking the budget process and appropriation. But if it's within adult probation, it wouldn't be, because again, once the budget gets adopted, even with the current, without this in it, you have budget authority up to that number. You just have to, if you're going to do it, you could do it in the first supplemental where you could add the spending because you have, you know, on January 1, if here's your, here's your pot of money to spend through the year and.
And are you going to need another, you're going to need a position on your org chart as well? And so there's.
We would, well, we could adjust, well, we still have a vacant case manager on the work chart. We would just have to adjust the.
The job duties.
Job duties, yes.
Job description, because it would have to be specific to this.
Correct.
Keep the auditors happy.
And do you feel that this will, all this position will cover and fill that case manager position that you guys feel like you can manage everything else? You're not going to need, come back and say, hey, I need another case manager?
I, I think it would, I think it would, it would help significantly. I don't think it would create more work. It would allow, you know, some breathing room and allow me to do more admin duties and start looking for other funding sources if needed as kind of we evolve, definitely.
Any other questions?
I'm good. Do we, I was going to say, I would, I would like to leave the meeting today with a consensus that we will earmark half the funds to this or the requested amount or whatever you, rather than just, we'll think about it and get back to you in January. Because if, if we're going to do this, I would like to get the people that are, I mean, the people that are going to have to set up the fund and, and all that kind of stuff need to do that anyway because they need to get ready for the check to arrive. So everybody needs in the loop. So if, if we're going to do that, I would suggest we just do it now.
I'm thinking we need to take it to the Budget and Finance Committee so that we can talk about the fund and where the dollars are going from the opioid settlement.
All right, I'm just looking for verbal approval. Verbal approval of this and then it can go through the hoops needed to move on.
I would say yes, and then that would also start, I would start the. send it to the whoever to make sure it's, I would, I would have a discussion with the PA and also the auditor as far as the, because that's again, it's a dedicated, you know, and she's that department's first. And the, I mean, that would happen in the finance committee. So maybe, yeah, I wouldn't. That's where it would go. Because they would all, because you'd have the, you have the, you'd have Jen and the treasurer and the auditor there. So.
Yes. I mean, yes, there's one yes.
Thank you.
I mean, yes. I think this is good unless it's no. I mean, unless it can't happen. If somebody says, no, you can't do it like that. I think in concept, I'm, I, I support them.
Yes, it's conditional on legal looking over your draft and making sure all the things in there are covered.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. You guys have a great afternoon.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Clickitack County EMS District Number One, the Chief of Operations, Will Harryman. He's en route.
He's in route. He was coming up the hill.
Director King's here though, and you're on the board.
I, yes, I am. I called Chief Harriman and he was coming up the grid about seven minutes ago. He should be here in a few minutes. They've had a very busy morning. Been at level zero twice today already for 911.
Really? Just to.
Is it the weather or accidents or?
Too much sugar? People having diabetic, you know, reactions for candy?
Yeah.
I thought this was sugar free.
It's probably the first rain of the year and all that oil.
Yeah.
Came up out of the concrete.
Not aware that we've had any major motor vehicle collisions that crossed those although we just did, as I walked in, had an ambulance go from code one to code three and divert to MCMC. So their patients started crashing. They're busy folks.
Okay.
I have a meeting at 11:45, so I need to make sure I get ducked out for that.
Okay. Is there anything while he's en route, you guys would like to talk about?
No, later. It doesn't matter.
Huh?
I said, it, it doesn't matter. I can give you a copy of the battery thing.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, they're dropping him off from an ambulance.
Dropping Will off from an ambulance?
Yeah, he was evidently helping out on the crew.
Oh.
So, oh my goodness. Like all 912.
On personal taxi in the 911.
Yeah, I was going to ask, did they, were they lights and sirens because he was late for a meeting?
He's on the grid. He'll be here in 45 seconds. Morning, sir.
Good morning. All right. Next up, we have Clickitack County EMS District Number One, Chief of Operations, Will Harriman to discuss interfacility transport with regards to the new health program and everything else that's going on.
Thank you for having me. So. Is that good there? There we go. Did you guys have anything specific that you wanted to ask me? Or when Lee called me, I was.
You invited him.
Right. Yes.
So I guess we're trying to understand, you know, we're, we're starting up this new behavioral health program and transportation has been seen to be one of our biggest limitations to get patients out of the county and to where they need to go. And so what we were hoping to do is have an update from the ambulance service from EMS District on what you guys can and cannot provide in order to, to help alleviate this problem. Is also is what your guys' limiting factors are in your operations.
Yeah. For us, it's a, we have three ambulances stationed throughout the county and it's a limited resource in that these are fully staffed ALS, Advanced Life Support Units with paramedics. And traditionally, at least since the district was formed, we have not done mental health transfers out of the county. If there's a medical component to it, we're happy to do those if they need sedation or ongoing restraints, it would require them to be in the back of the ambulance. We're able to do that. But typically, these only require one person and especially not a specialized ambulance to take them where they need to go. So that has been historically over the last several years, what we've done and what our position has been on that.
So you have, you have three stations and three full-time ambulances 24/7?
Yes.
Okay. So you haven't historically provided mental health transfers. And I wish, is Chris online? Do we know? Okay. Well, I guess we're going to have to rely on our health director then. Aaron, could you come up and show, because I can't remember too many things. When we do a transfer for an involuntary patient, are they required to be transported by ambulance?
If they have a medical reason, yes. If they're chemically or physically restrained, then yes, that would be, that would be a requirement.
Okay. And so the only, pretty much the only time we can, we need transport where that's not the case is if it's a, it's a voluntary transport, correct?
Correct. And voluntary transports, we've managed differently. So that's not what we're asking the ambulance to participate in. I think we should probably be clear about that part.
Right. And that's where I was going is, is that pretty much, so all involuntary are medically or chemically? Right. Okay. And would, what percentage would you say is the involuntary versus?
Well, I can't speak to that statistic. I don't, I don't have that number. I apologize.
Okay. So I guess the, the, the next question is, is I was looking at your guys' overview and it says that if it's over 125 miles, even if it is medically necessary, if it's an involuntary placement, it has to go through you personally?
Right. I think you're referring to our interfacility.
Transfer.
Which primarily is geared towards our relationship with the hospitals for medical transport that we do. But yeah, we would apply that also to involuntarily, involuntary mental health. We've done them before. But we do it on a case by case basis, based on the availability of ambulances at the time of the request, whether we can bring in an off-duty crew so that we don't lower our 911 capabilities. So the people are usually in a hospital. So we, we try not to take away from the 911 response of people out in their homes that, you know, might not be able to get to the hospital. These people are usually in a hospital. So we handle them a little differently than a priority call. If that makes sense, as far as our staffing goes.
So if you, you have, you, you, you only have three ambulances, right?
On duty, right.
How many ambulances do you have total?
We have a total of six ambulances.
Okay. And so if you were, if you were to transfer from one facility that's, that's a hospital, but they're not capable of, you know, helping this person, they don't have the specialty skills, whether it's, you know, for, you know, a heart attack or whether it's for, you know, mental behavioral health, medical condition, you see there's a difference there on that interfacility transfer?
In, in the priority of it, as far as reducing our capabilities to respond to emergent calls, yeah, there's a difference. If someone is already in a safe place and it's being cared for medically, we are concerned about sending our units what will turn into several hours out of the county. And when we get those back to back, now we're down to one ambulance for the whole county. So we try to avoid situations like that. And so we've set these guidelines to try to help the hospitals look for resources that are closer. But we will, on a case by case basis, you know, go outside of that recommended mileage. We did it last week. We ended up taking two of them in the same day. One was the request that, that you had. And then we took somebody from Goldendale all the way to Longview. It's just a long time to have a ambulance out of the Goldendale area. Because then we, we moved the Dallasport ambulance up to Goldendale to cover it. And so now White Salmon and Goldendale have to cover their areas and cover the central area. So it's a time that the unit is out of the county that logistically and operationally, we try to protect ourselves there. If it's, if it's a 911 call, we typically would take them to the closest hospital and then that unit's back in service in a relatively short amount of time. And three ambulances cover the county in a pretty efficient way. But if you take one of those ambulances and take it out of the system for five, five plus hours, that starts taxing it. And then when we get busy, it's hard. Our, our mutual aid partners are in the same boat staffing wise. Hood Rivers has to call us over a fair number of times to cover them because they have the same problem with the hospitals that they have of sending them to Portland and, and lowering their ability to do 911 calls. And we get called to the Dallas also more often than we use them to come over here. And of course, Goldendale has no natural backup, you know, Yakima. That's a long ways to go to get some backup services. So that's where we come from as far as patients being in a secure location where they're being cared for versus a citizen that's in Appleton having a stroke. Who is going to go take care of them if we're out of the district for, for an extended period of time? So we're constantly weighing those two factors. And as far as the hospitals go, we treat their emergent requests the same as we would a 911. So if if you're, let's say, a trauma patient that ended up at Skyline and you need to go to Emmanuel, we'll send the closest ambulance immediately to take you.
Good. I had, I, I'm writing my questions down and you're, you're kind of answering them as you're.
So those, we make those priorities. The only ones we delay would be non-emergent.
Right.
Or if we've already sent one ambulance out of the county and we're down to two, we won't send that second one until the first one is within striking distance of being back in the county. So there, there is a delay there. Just because sometimes they come down two at a time. Well, sometimes they want three ambulances. And obviously, we're not going to put ourselves in a situation where we have no ambulances to respond to emergency calls.
So may I ask a question? So what are the facility, what other options do they have for transport? The hospitals say, I mean, is our, what's their alternative, I guess, if they have patients that they need to move from, you know, one facility to another, you know, from say the DOWs or let's keep it in county. Because I don't want to say I don't care about the DOWs, but I have less care about the DOWs. So Golddale, so KVH has a patient, it's not, it's not emergent, it's not an emergency. But they need to have moved from here to Legacy or, you know, in, in the city. And just because of the volume of calls, they're just, we can't, you can't do it because you don't want to jeopardize the system's ability to respond. If I call 911 with a heart attack because you're, you're in Portland, do they just have to wait until the system is where they, there's capacity and you can move them? Or do they have an all, is there, do they have a, somebody else they can call?
So yes, their first option would be to work with us and we'll get them an ambulance as soon as possible. The second would be to contact private ambulance services that, that do transfers.
So they're not left with no options?
We are usually their best option.
Was, sure.
And, you know, calling around can be problematic. Let's say that you call a private service that's based in Portland, you know, we're, we're really not that important to them out there. You know, they'll get out here when they can get out here, basically is what the hospitals get told. Or if, let, let's say in Goldendale, they might call a private service out of Yakima. You know, so that's 70 miles here. So it really depends on how busy their system is as to how soon another ambulance from there could come. Lifeflight is an option that they use also. That would, that would be their two options.
So and you don't differentiate when we were talking about mental health, you know, involuntary treatment, it sounds like if I gathered that that is typically if you're being, if you're being moved in, you know, it's an involuntary commitment, you're, you're likely would qualify. That would be somebody that, you know, they have to be either physically or chemically restrained. I like that terminology, but and so there really is no difference between that and a heart patient, that it's medically necessary to go in an ambulance.
Right.
Versus, I mean, it's not just the mental health that it kind of puts them in a different category or.
No, no.
It's the, if it's medically necessary to go in an ambulance.
I think for us, there's limited resources in the metro area. Like during COVID, it's been hard to get anybody transferred to Portland, right? Yeah. But just the way that mental health or if somebody needs inpatient addiction care or something like that, that's in a crisis, those resources aren't as readily available in the metro. I, I consider the metro local as far as transfers we do. So when somebody needs to go all the way to Chehalis, that's, that's a long haul for us. To take that unit out of the.
Right. So that's the 125 mile.
That's kind of why that's.
Your local.
Yeah, that's typically what we do and that's what we're set up to do. So when it goes outside of that, we need to make sure that we're covering all our bases as best that we can. Sometimes it just, we gotta just sort of take that risk and send a unit out. But I want that to be, you know, not the norm. I want everyone that's involved in it to understand this problem exists, but how are we going to fix it long? this problem exists, but how are we going to fix it long-term and sustainably? Not, oh, we're not normally set up to do this, so here, you guys, you guys take care of this ultimately. Because that really, that's not what we do for the everyday operations. It's something outside of the norm to go to Chehalis. If that makes sense. So, you know, something that maybe only happens three times a year, it's very hard to set our system up to take that into account. Like just, oh yeah, okay, we'll just do that. It's, it's outside of the norm. Let's make sure that we're doing it responsibly. That's basically what we're asking with our policy is, don't just expect that we can just do that at a moment's notice. We're going to have to step back and make sure that we're covering all our bases before we step out to do that. And we're just getting started with the process of meeting with mental health and then, you know, the sort of the thing that the county's dealing with right now, we've just had one meeting. I've kind of explained all this to Chris and Aaron. So we haven't had a lot of discussion on it, but we have had one meeting on it. And then recently, this Chehalis transfer came up. Unfortunately, I didn't know about the, when it initially came in, the day before, I came into it on day two. So as soon as I found out about it, I started working on it. The crew just said, well, we don't typically do that. And so that kind of left and not pursued any further. So...
So I guess, I guess that kind of gets down to the problem that we're having, like when it comes to, you know, behavioral, mental health, involuntary treatment, where we're in essence, taking away someone's rights and liberties. And not only that, but in many instances, we also have to have a designated crisis responder there with them for this time. And then we also have to have a city or county police officer there as well in, in there. And so if this is something that, that's not emergent for you guys and falls on your emergent spectrum, we could be spending 36 plus hours where a police officer is out of, out of commission that entire time. The DCR is there, you know, pretty much that entire time. And the behavioral mental health beds in the state are very limited and they're usually only open for a small window. And so we can spend hours and hours and hours trying to find a bed for them. And then when we find the bed, if we can't transport them to that place, that bed's gone. And now we have an officer and someone else still sitting there. And I guess the question is, is, is somebody with a heart attack that needs transferred from White Salmon to Portland, the same, the same level as somebody who, you know, is a behavioral mental health crisis that needs to be transported from White Salmon to Vancouver? Is that on the same level?
If it were Vancouver, yeah, because that's within what we typically do. There, that wouldn't be an issue. It's the fact that this particular thing with Chehalis, which is not Vancouver and extends out. Like, it's really hard for me to address the other departments that are expending resources on the situation because if the answer is just to, oh, well, the ambulance will just do it, well, that's not taking count our resources or the fact that we're going to tie up two people in an advanced life support ambulance, because there's only three of in the county, to do something that nothing has been provided for within the system to accommodate that or to... It kind of goes back to what I said before. It's hard to set up something that happens maybe three times, two times a year and still provide what we're primarily mandated to do. Does that make sense? There, there is no provisions for us to call in off-duty people to do something like this. That's what we do. And that's my first move and that takes time. Because I'm basically asking people to give up their time off, to come in and do something that we don't really have, there's no system in place to deal with this. So it comes down to resource allocation and how, how do we fit in to help get it done, but not just be the fallback position of, oh, well, they have an ambulance, why don't they just do it? There's other things that operationally we have to take into account to do that.
And so is your goal then to have two ambulances in the county at all times?
At least, yeah. Yeah, that, that's what we strive to do. It's a big county. And normally, under normal operations, three ambulances do a good job of doing that with our, moving our ambulances around based on where a call is. If a call is in Glenwood, we're going to move Dallasport to the White Salmon area to better cover, because they're going to be gone, you know, almost an hour in responding and being on scene and then they've got to come back if it's a transport. So that makes sense in a, in an hour, an hour and a half. When you start talking about a five-hour incident, we don't really have a system to make sure that we're adequately covering everything. Because it, it, it's a situation for us where, you know, today I'm here and I'm glad to be here and try to explain our systems, that everyone understands it. Or I'll be in a situation where I'm trying to explain to a family why it took us a long time to get to their emergency. Both of those can be somewhat uncomfortable, but I'd rather be talking about this when there's not an incident happening than trying to explain to somebody why we weren't able to put an ambulance at their house in a timely manner. For somebody who, you know, it's already in a situation where they're relatively safe, they need to go somewhere else, but do they need to do it right now?
Before the EMS district was formed and the hospitals did it themselves, was there just two ambulances on at a time?
Normally.
No, there was, there was... I mean, there was three facilities, because there was the Dallasport, I mean, there was an ambulance in Dallasport.
Eventually, yeah. And then it, then it went away and then it came back. And Gold, historically, we're talking like 25 years back, as I understand it. The hospital had a BLS ambulance, which is basic life support, and an ALS. And if the transfer was BLS, and they would use that and leave the ALS there. But a lot of them are ALS transfers and need to be on a monitor or have IV going. And that would just leave a BLS ambulance there. Well, as things stand today, there are BLS first response agencies like Goldendale Fire and Rural Seven. Goldendale is capable of transporting in an emergency rather than sitting waiting for an hour for somebody to show up. So those, those are kind of comparable to what was done back then. There was a time when people were asked to come to Goldendale and just be on like a pager pay system, not getting full wages and be available. That gets kind of dicey when, if I live in White Salmon, my employer requires me to go to Goldendale and sit somewhere for 24 hours and they only want to pay me pager pay and then pay me my full wages when I get activated. I, I'm not, I don't want to put myself in that situation. So those are not apples-to-apples comparisons, but there are things that have happened in the past that would give the appearance that there were more ambulances than, than just three.
So with...
Can I, what, I think the biggest difference between now and then is once a district was formed, the district had the ability, because the tax where taxpayers were footing the majority of the bill now instead of the hospitals. And the hospitals were paying for it, they got to dictate the rules. And if they wanted to send their only ambulance to Spokane for a mental health patient, I mean, they, they could do what they wanted to do. There was no accountability or, I mean, there was their moral obligation to the community to provide a service, but they were able to do whatever they saw fit as being appropriate. And I think once the district took over, then they sort of centered it more on not necessarily what transfers, you know, and what was good for the hospital. That's just me, my opinion and the different sort of philosophy between a hospital-based system where they're controlling it and a, a sort of a third service that's looking out for 911 and doing the transfers.
Chairman, I have a meeting to go to.
Okay.
Going to have to leave the room, sir.
Did you have any questions?
I don't. You did a wonderful job and a good update and I am now far smarter on ambulances than I was yesterday. It doesn't sound a lot, but I appreciate it, sir.
So when, when does the mutual aid kick in for other people being mutual aid for us?
So let's, let's say that both, that two ambulances are out. So there's, let's say it's just White Salmon. White Salmon is going to move to Avery area to try to cover everything. If a call come down in Wa, in White Salmon proper, we would try to have Hood River come over for that, if they're available. Sometimes they're not. And so that White Salmon would have to wait for Skamania, let's say, to come, which is going to be about a half an hour. I, you know, we could try to get the DOWs to come down to White Salmon, but...
But you wouldn't send the Avery down because it's further?
Oh, well, we would, but we would try to send that closer mutually. You're asking when we would try to use Hood River?
Yeah.
That would be a scenario.
Okay.
We never move Goldendale out of Goldendale because there just is no backup. So if we're down to one ambulance and it's Goldendale, they stay in their area.
Okay.
And then we would call the DOWs over for Dallasport or up the middle and we would call Hood River or Skamania to do the west, west side.
Jeff, you had your hand up?
We have a whole matrix of dispatches that we follow, the system status that the EMS district follows and dispatch follows the system matrix. So after those ALS are not available, Hood River and Skamania or DOW, MC, FNR for the central area, then the only thing that's left are the fire district aid vehicles. Those are BLS units. And in a scenario like Glenwood, Trauley, those agencies don't want to take their aid vehicle out of district for too long or too far for the same reason that the EMS district doesn't want to go out of district, is that that leaves their citizens uncovered for that next 911 call. And that person has no one taking care of them. Where we compromise the 911 response system for interfacility transfers, the interfacility transfer person has some level of medical care already being provided to them. The person that calls 911 has no level of medical care coming. So we've been in that circumstance several times in recent years. And like Chief Baron said, Goldendale City Fire and others have transported in Goldendale. It's easy for them because that doesn't take them out of district very, at all, to go to AVH as a fire aid vehicle. And McLaughlin, Trauley, Glenwood, Pickleton, others, they would be out of district for a considerable amount of time.
So I guess what we're going to need help with is what are our solutions going to be to try to get these people transported that are medically necessary? They have to have ALS, they're involuntary treatment and they've got to go an extended distance, whether it's wherever a bed is open? Is it, we're just not going to be able to do it and we'll just release them? And whatever happens, happens? Is it, like, I know we've had potential transfers all the way up as far as Seattle, correct? And that's, that's an extended period of time. And what can the ambulance district, the EMS district do to help, help us be able to get these people transported where they need to go? But that are emergent, you know, it's medically necessary, but it's going to be a long time out. What options do we have available for us?
As far as the county-based EMS system, Chehalis is about as far as we can go. If it's Seattle, then they really should try to work with a private service that, that's what they, they have cars dedicated to just do transfers. They're not part of their 911 matrix. But those are expensive and, and they're not always readily available. So I don't have a good answer for that. At a certain point, I have to start thinking, well, do I need to provide a, I have to start providing meals definitely to my crews? And then, you know, do I have to do overnight lodging and things like that to try to cover something that just doesn't happen very often? It's a tough question because it isn't just unique to Clicktack County. This is a nationwide problem. And there are very few solutions out there and a rural EMS district, you know, has limited ability to fix those kind of problems. To me, the, the one thing that happens much more often are the voluntary mental health patients that need to get to Vancouver or farther that have no medical need. That seems to happen a lot more as far as the hospitals go. What do we do with them? Than the medical needs? Because I'm very sympathetic to the, you know, if they have a medical component to it, I, it's really not about whether we'll get reimbursed for it or not. It's can, can we tie up a limited resource for that long a time? That is the only issue, not, it's not, it's not at all about necessarily being reimbursed for it. If it were happening every day, obviously, that would be drawing from what the people are paying us to do and that we'd have to evaluate that. This, this is really more of a sort of out of the blue, the, the scenario that you're presenting. I don't have a good answer to that. I do have suggestions for the non-emergent, which would be, and this has been talked about, acquiring a, a vehicle that has a cage where the driver is safe, has at least first aid CPR training to note, recognize an emergency, and then they just drive them from point A to point B. Those, I mean, I could provide a list of personnel that could be contacted to, to drive those vehicles. But I definitely don't think tying up a specialty vehicle like an ALS ambulance to do that is, is appropriate. And we've talked about this already and, and there might be some funding to get that vehicle. And And I think, you know, there'd be a pretty big pull. It could be opened up to like even the trained volunteer firefighters if they wanted to do that on an on-call basis. But yeah, the county's not going to be able to afford to obviously have a unit, an ALS unit to do.
Sitting there.
Yeah, to go to Seattle once in a while because we can't find a bed locally. But I understand that's not within your budget. And operationally, I can't commit to, yes, we'll always be able to do that. Because I have times when people are off sick, they're on vacation. I have a hard time staffing just to my minimum levels and then to try to pull in an off-duty crew because I need two people for an ambulance. One of them needs to be a paramedic. That can be very challenging because I'm already maximizing people's time by calling them in to cover these open shifts already. Staffing is very hard right now, as everybody knows, for medically trained people. We're the same as.
What is your staff? How many, how many full-time FTEs do you guys have?
We have 18 people for the ambulances. So nine of those are paramedics and nine are EMT or EMT IV trained. We're work, we're recruiting, we're hiring. We've finally gotten to full staffing where we're not asking our full-time employees to take a lot of shifts. And we're actually one at this moment, I hate, is this real wood? We have one, we're training one extra paramedic. Like, we finally have one more person that's not assigned at the moment that we at least now can talk about, can we start having a daytime ALS ambulance to help with this stuff on a limited basis? You know, try to get one more unit during our busy time to help with, you know, the staffing issue. And so we're always trying to find solutions, and we're open to working with people. But we do have sort of a hierarchy of, we need to do this, we need to do this, and we need to do this. And then we can look at, well, what else can we do to make sure that, that, you know, as far as emergency medical services go, are we meeting the need in the community? And like I said, when I first got here, I really appreciate you guys inviting me up, even though I was late. I really do. I mean, it's two years coming. I haven't come before you guys yet, you know, COVID and all that stuff. But I am, you guys can call me anytime to come up and talk about stuff like this. I'm available. I can switch my schedule around and come up and, you know, meet with you guys about anything that you think involves EMS, so, or how we might be able to help.
So when you do like a long transport and, you know, a lot of the mental health involuntary patients are likely Medicaid, are you guys taking a loss when you do a long-distance transport, you know, funding-wise?
We are, we're involved in the GEMT program, which is a government program to help subsidize Medicaid patients. That's about $80,000, I think, has been a year to help offset those costs. You know, obviously, medic, I, I would say, you can't hold me to this, but if we were taking a dollar, DSHs is, for EMS, is somewhere around 20 cents or a little, little more on the dollar that, for what we charge that we get back. Medicare's 55 cents on the dollar. We have to write the rest of it. We're just obligated to write. We can't balance bill those. And then private insurance is, you know, people have copays and things like that. So, but the, you know, a vast majority of our patients are on some kind of assistance. We're, we're a poor county. So I would, yeah, those, they do present a financial challenge, but that's just part of, that's definitely where the tax money that we receive makes up that gap as far as us fail to not always be worrying about squeezing every dime out of a patient. Because we do have a charity care program. People are not able to pay whatever isn't covered, you know? They can submit that to us and we can write that off. And that's only because of the taxpayer support.
My last question. So if it's in the middle of the night, and, you know, I was looking at your guys' transport policy, and if we have somebody that's a behavioral health that needs transported from Goldendale to Vancouver, Yakima, you're going to treat that the same as emergent as if it's, if it's somebody who's having a heart attack, interfacility transport?
If there was some factor that made it the same, we would.
I mean, if it's, you know, if it's an involuntary treatment transfer, so that's medically necessary, it has to have an ALS ambulance, and they need to be transported within that 125 miles, you'll, you'll send them in the night versus, you know, saying, this is not emergent, we're going to let our people sleep, and if it's after 8:00 a.m., we'll, we'll then transport.
There would have to be something to it that, that would require us to bump that up into a life-threatening situation or. It, it, it isn't just about sleep. Typically, call volumes are lower at night, and so it is a little slower, but it's also a little more riskier to do long transfers that are not necessarily emergent.
What do you mean, riskier?
The riskier in that if, if a crew has been busy all day and then you're asking them to drive for five hours for a non-emergent patient, it isn't just getting to where they need to go, they also have to get back. And, you know, are they going to have to pull over and sleep for a while, which is just going to extend out how long they're gone? They're, the safety of the crew and the property of the taxpayers is something that you can't just dismiss in this industry. The, the accidents are greater at night. Sometimes it's, there's a lot of things that contribute to it. Fatigue is one. Other drivers at night, typically, you know, they're not, it's, visibility is lower, the, the impairment as the night goes on, a higher percentage of those people are impaired. And so it's a little riskier at night to, to be out driving around versus a crew that's daylight hours and, and they're, they're rested. Sometimes that's a factor, and sometimes it's not. You know, we're setting a policy to try to do best practices overall. If it were the first night that a crew is on, then there would be less risk, for sure. But I don't want to set up a system that, okay, has such a complicated matrix, oh, this crew happens to be on the first 24 hours of their shift, so they could do this at night versus this is a crew that's been very busy while they've been on, this is the second night that they're on, and now we're asking them to drive an extended period of time at night. It's, it's, in our industry, it's pretty easy to like take a 911 call. Let's say it's White Salmon. They go to Housam. They bring the patient back. So it's less than an hour that they're up. If you put a patient in the back of ambulance and you drive them to, you know, 120 miles, well, now they got it. You know, there's no adrenaline involved, there's no, they just got to, if you take the average person, ask them to get up in the middle of the night and drive 120 miles and then turn right around and drive another 120 miles back, there's a, there's a risk to that. It isn't just about them getting to sleep that night. It's, it's more dangerous to do that than during the day, daylight hours.
Commissioner Sutter, do you have any more questions?
I do not.
I really want to thank you for coming up, and we've never met before, so it's a pleasure.
Yeah.
And I'm sure we have, you know, multiple meetings on behavioral health. We're standing up this new program, and we'd love if you have time to make some of our meetings.
Yeah, Chris, on Wednesdays?
Yeah, every other Wednesday.
Yeah.
We'd love to have you.
I will definitely try to, I think he was going to make sure that I got sent.
The invite.
The invites to those.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Anytime.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to recess for the lunch break back at 1:00.
There's a motion, and I will step down and second it. All those in favor of recessing for lunch, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Do you guys?
Driving what it thinks you're saying is hilarious to watch.
Oh, it's time.
It listens all the way to the back.
Are we doing recession circles? Incredible shrinking.
That's funny.
Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clicktack County Board of County Commissioners to order. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present. With that, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda with add-ons under new business resolution in the matter of designated the Clicktack County Behavioral Health Department as the provider of county-designated crisis respond, responders, and professional service agreement with three crisis responders. Authorization for the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign the joint Columbia River Regional Airport Policy Statement.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the business agenda with all the additions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, we have meeting minutes if you're, okay? Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes for October 4th and October 18th, 2022, as presented.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we are going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. We will begin, as always, in the room first. Please only comment on things that are not on the agenda for later today, for, if it's a hearing. And the commissioners will respond after everybody has had a chance to give their comments. We will begin, as always, in the room. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Okay, online, is there anyone who would like to provide public comment? I'm seeing 3376.
Hello, Commissioners. I want to take you back to last week, the, during public comment, a lady called in, was wondering about $600,000 that was earmarked for a animal shelter in, in the county with the help of Gina Mossbrucker. And so that, I got a little curious about where that money was. So I, the sheriff was on a talk show on Wednesday, and I, I called in and asked him about the $600,000. And he said it's still there, but he was waiting for some kind of direction from the county, meaning the county commissioners or whoever would want to take the reins on that to help develop it. You know, you guys were talking about this morning, you just acquired 20, what was it, 20 or 40 acres out there by the, the air grounds? So you can't say you don't have any place you could put it. And that'd be a great place for it, have a, a, a road come off of 142 behind the, the transfer station and come into the animal shelter or something like that, you know? But I was wondering, do you have any plans for that money? Are you willing to work with the sheriff? And when I asked him about manning the facility, that it would take people, he said that he has volunteers in the posse and said they would, they would help with it. So that would cover the need to not even hire anybody. That, that, they, they volunteering, so it's not going to cost you much. So if you want to use that $600,000 bucks, that's not doing us any good just sitting there, is it? And give it some thought. People have been wanting this shelter for a long time now. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your work. Bye.
Thank you, sir. And that was Ken McKeon, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Ken McKeon, Goldendale. Yes.
All right, thank, thank you, Ken. Okay.
Sure.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to provide public comment? Okay, back online. Public comment, star six, unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video camera on. 4901.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Sherri Housam. Last week, you held, the Commissioners held a public hearing to discuss the county decommissioning plan and updated amended version of the county decommissioning plan for wind and solar projects, renewable energy in Clicktack County. And I questioned at that time, you know, how serious is our, is our county about making a very solid decommissioning plan for the future when these renewable energy sites hit end of their lifespan and assuring that this renewable energy junk is not left on land in Clicktack County, putting the burden either on the landowners or perhaps the county in the cleanup? And how important this decommissioning plan is and how much teeth did you really want to put into it? I'd also remind you, I asked you to forward this to the Planning Commission for oversight. In an email from Commissioner Christopher, he says, perhaps we don't know the legal roles of what the Planning Commission does, and maybe they don't know what they even do either. So maybe one of you could enlighten us how that works, what role the Planning Commission has in Clicktack County, and how much do you, you know, lean on these nine volunteers for common sense and good, good thoughts for the future of the county? And then I'd also like to ask, any one of you can answer, what benefit did you gain last Tuesday in the public hearing from having a conversation with the representative from Avangrid, who's the one putting in our first industrial solar and expanding in Pickleton? You had a half an hour conversation with the corporation, and I listened to this man basically dictating to you what he doesn't want to do, what bonds he doesn't want to put in place, how he wants to have scrap value, how he wants this and he doesn't want that. And I listened to the corporation tell our county what they were going to do in favor for them. And you gave the citizens three minutes, and when somebody asked for additional time, you told them to sit down. So I would like to know what benefit did you have with talking to the corporation as they dictated what they did and didn't want? And how does that benefit your, our county's decommissioning plan so we don't get stuck with 10 feet of pole in the ground? Every post he wants to cut, they want to cut off at the surface, leaving 10 feet of poles in the ground for future people. in the ground for future people to clean up. So what benefit did you gain? Was that an appearance of fairness violation? Because you gave the corporation during a public hearing 30 minutes and you gave the public three? You did not have a back and forth with the public, but you certainly had a back and forth with the corporation. So how did you benefit from that interaction? And how does that benefit our county? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moskay. We'll go back in the room if there's anyone who would like to provide public comment. Okay, online. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi, I wanted to let the county commissioners know that a date for the childcare forum to be open to the public in White Salmon is for November 9th. And they are still clarifying the actual time, but the date has been set. And this invitation is for all three of you and any of the candidates as well to be able to come to hear what the county and what the West End has to say about the lack of childcare. And we look to Goldendale as well to put their voice in. Because I think that what is lacking on the movement towards addressing the lack of childcare in the county is that you need to understand each of the storylines that families are going through. It is important for you to address childcare as infrastructure. It is important for you to address it as economics. And it is important that we create policy that allows for money to flow from the state into the counties so that everybody has skin in the game and everybody works towards the common goal, which is to change the landscape of a childcare desert into one which there is available, accessible and affordable childcare. You have a senior service and with that, you as a county place your value on that senior service for what it provides. You put money in the budget every year for that. You also have state dollars. I feel that it is time for policy to be crafted that creates a child service that becomes the conduit for which grant dollars and state dollars and county dollars can be placed so that childcare is addressed and built and maintained and allows for the community to flourish because they have that aspect and service available to them. I feel that childcare has been like nonexistent. If you, if you were building your $20 million new county building, then you could have, if you believed that childcare was important, then those plans for that new build would have been far enough away from the main road that you would have successfully been, been within regulations that you could have had space in the building for childcare for the county workers. I feel conversations with the hospitals that are in our county have to be had on how there are award-winning hospitals with childcare as part of their explicit, what they offer to their community and to their workers in the hospital, that, that we could, we could copy that and make that happen as well. So it's not going away. It's never gone away, but it does demand that elected officials start addressing it in a meaningful way. So the 9th of November, and I hope you're there. And to Commissioner Christopher, I hope that you start attending the childcare committee. It is important for all of you to actually be on board with what's being discussed in those committee meetings. All right, thank you for your time. And I hope that you'll answer to this comment and redeem yourself for staying silent last week. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Just so you know, when you hear that timer going off, your three minutes are up. And if you would please finish up so that we're not seen as giving favoritism like we were just accused of in the last, previous person.
Okay, well, I apologize for that, but once I have the microphone, I kind of keep it. So sorry.
Same problem. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, is there anybody else in the room or online who would like to provide public comment? Please come forward.
Delmar Eldred, Goldendale, Washington. And you know, really, I don't know who you guys think you're fooling because it's pretty obvious which side of the renewable energy you guys are on and it's the developers. Because you, you do not want to do anything to try to protect this county. It's very obvious that there's been a lot of problems with what's going on, not only here, but countries that have had this renewable energy a lot longer than we have are facing a winter that is going to be disastrous right now. And so what are they doing? They're firing up their coal and trying to get coal generation in place to try to alleviate some of the painful aspects of this winter. But and on top of that, the mess that is left behind. And you guys have no regard about the toxic dump that you're creating in this county. Because, you know, the thing is, you guys are addicted to working with these developers in any way you can. And the heck with the citizens, the heck with the county. I don't care about the county. I care about seeing how much development we can get. And you don't even know what kind of money you're going to get out of it. You have no idea what they're going to pay. Usually, normally, Iowa, Massachusetts, I could name a lot of other states. They get half of what they thought they were going to get, which is nothing compared to if you went to developing this county into subdivisions and stuff where people come in here and work and donate to the county constantly. And every time you get a tax increase, you get more taxes. Renewable energy, every, every year, they pay less taxes because the way it's set up. But you guys are, you know, I mean, you guys have no concern for what the future of this county is. You just care about what you can do right now to please these developers. And that's, that's where it, you're not fooling anybody, what you're doing here. It's very obvious. You, you guys will not research. I mean, if you went to Manhattan Institute, Forbes, environmental research, you guys would find out that you are headed down the road of disaster in this county, but you could care less about that. You know, I, I don't know why you guys even hold this position. And you will not take the time to investigate and take a look at what, at the road we're going down right now and where we're going to end up with. I mean, maybe you guys figure we'll do what we want and we'll leave this county behind because we're not going to stay here and face the consequences. And as long as I have a breath, as long as I'm living, when this stuff comes about, I'm going to point out exactly who's responsible for the mess that we're, the toxic mess that this county is sitting in in the future. And I just hope I live long enough to broadcast it as far as I can, the people that wouldn't pay attention to what's going on in this county and let it go.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? In the room or online? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? In the room or online? 7211.
Greg Wagner with CEES. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call your attention to a procedural error you made last week. After the model decommissioning, you failed to get a motion to reschedule the public hearing. You didn't get a second, you didn't get an affirmation vote. So the public hearing on the decommissioning plan is really still open. That being said, I'd also like to ask you, Mr. Anderson. Last week, I thought you were very disrespectful to the men from the Dallas Port Water District. Your conduct was despicable. You told the men you weren't going to get in a pissing match with them. Then you demanded a yes or no answer from them, just like a bully. Your behavior was unprofessional. You owe those men and every, everyone who had to listen to your disgusting behavior an apology. You were supposed to be the leader. You need to lead by example and your example is not the kind we want for our county. I'd also like to say that the comprehensive plan states that the commissioners would be to encourage public participation in the decision-making. If you don't notify the citizens of public hearings other than on the county website, and many people don't have computers, you don't put ads in the paper, nobody shows up for the public hearings because they don't exist. And if you don't give them the information or tell them where to find the information to study about the topic of the public hearing, they don't know how to testify. So you need to help inform the citizens. That's your job. You represent us. I'd like to know why we are spending $7.2 million on Courtney Road, but you're unwilling to spend $11,000 for additional memory to store the Thursday workshops, videos? That doesn't make sense. $11,000. And even that, you got a YouTube account that you could store them for free. And I'd also like to know, since Mr. Sutter said that the new services buildings is the people's building, why do you charge 20, charge the people $25 to use the first floor meeting room? Why must the citizens pay $25? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Last chance. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Online or in the room? Would either of my seatmates like to respond to anything that was brought up today?
For what? It will have zero value, but actually, let me start with something that perhaps. Ms. Gilbert, could you, you said on November 9th, the childcare forum. You didn't say a time or a place other than it's in the West End. If you're still on, Gabrielle?
Yes. So it's my understanding that it will be held at the chambers that the White Salmon City Council uses above the fire hall. And it is also my understanding that there will be Zoom capability. And it hasn't been confirmed yet, but there is a possibility that there is also Facebook. They're still tweaking what the times and, but those are the things that are in the works and the date is absolutely secured and confirmed as November 9th. And you're welcome as well to reach out to the mayor of White Salmon as her office is coordinating and if there's updated info. And as I get updated info next Tuesday, if you guys are meeting again, then I will clarify. But they are doing it.
So City of White Salmon is, is kind of the sponsor, so the mayor is coordinating, is that?
Yeah, it's going to be, I mean, this has been an advocacy lobby that happened over the summer in front of the White City, White Salmon City Council that we are in crisis and we're not going to pretend anymore. And that lobby got this measure into their retreat to discuss business priorities and budget for the next five years for the City of White Salmon. And then the push has been to get meetings. One of the things that is going to be done is having the state representatives, and it is my belief that that will be Cory and Gina past November, to come to the county and for all of you elected officials, county commissioners, city mayors, city councilmen, countywide, you have a roundtable with your elected officials and we start hammering out what it looks like to have a child service in this county, the same as you have a senior service, what it looks like to get dollars from the state.
Ms. Gilbert, I'm going to take the mic away from you. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay.
Thank you for answering the question.
This is the direction.
Yes, all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Maybe just one as far as, because I've, I've heard it from two folks. Our, our decommissioning hearing we had where we gave the citizens three minutes and we gave the industry folks where we had a conversation. Everyone gets three minutes to make comment. If you look at our procedures and this is, it doesn't matter if it's the industry or anybody, after we are done taking comment, we then, we, meaning the board, it is our hearing, have the opportunity to ask questions of whomever, whether, and I do believe we probably asked a couple of questions of citizens. We also asked a bunch of questions of the industry folks, the fellow that was here. That is not, because the questions that we were asking were questions to the industry. It was completely appropriate to act, that was not having a conversation. It was, we were, we had questions or I had questions and I was asking them. That's the correct person to ask those questions to. If there were questions that I would have, that I thought the answers were with the citizens, I would have asked individual folks those questions as well. That was, that was not inappropriate in any way. And I don't, there is nothing I can say to Mr. Eldred that will ever change your mind about anything, sir. This is not an opportunity.
Yes, it is. You guys say on the radio, we have a town hall meeting every week. A town hall meeting is a conversation between you and the citizen. And I paid 47 years for this microphone and don't tell me I got three minutes. You get $90,000 a year, just work five hours a week or whatever it is.
Sir, you don't understand the level of disrespect that you are showing, not to me. I don't care.
You disrespect the citizens.
I am not, I, sir.
You disrespect, you disrespect, you disrespect.
That is your opinion, sir.
Because you will not have a conversation on the issues that are important. You guys take control, you guys take control of the meeting at the end of the comment.
Right. Because guess whose meeting it is, sir?
So where's the rest of the, where's the rest of the people?
It's not your meeting, sir. It's our meeting that the public is, is welcome to observe us having our business meeting. That's what it is. I think we have confusion.
What we got here then is what we have is a dictatorship that's running this county. And that's exactly what you are. You are a dictator and all of you guys are. You will not listen to the citizens. You won't hold a meeting with the citizens so you can get the concerns and deal with the issues that are important to this county.
I will respectfully disagree with you and as, as I was, sir, unlike you, I was elected to this position four times. Have you been?
No, but that was, it's not.
You are not charged, you are not empowered to speak for the people.
Just because the citizens made a mistake, don't mean they have to live with it. Yeah. Who was running against you? Anybody?
The, sir, the level of disrespect that I have always kept my temper. But you, you try me, sir.
You try me every week.
Well, that's, that's good.
Because you don't care about this county?
Sir, that is, I have lived here far longer than you have, sir. And I will live here far longer after you don't. So yes, there's the door. You are welcome to leave if it is so offensive in here. No, I.
As a board, continue to allow the outbursts of disrespect that is happening? It's not just about us, it's about the office.
Right.
And if you or we continue to allow those types of outbursts from CEES, it's only going to get worse. So does that mean this board needs to look at remote meeting only? Where we have the ability to shut off the mics for people who want to throw tantrums? Honestly, I would hate to think that because 99% of the people are just and orderly and they can sit there and call me every name they want as long as they're orderly in doing it. But all we're doing is breeding and, and. I don't know. I don't know. We have the ability to turn those mics off, but I wipe mics off right now, does it really stop me from being belligerent and, and speaking out of order and? Other than locking the room, there's really no way to control the, the mic.
It's like a comedy. It's almost be appropriate if you had a sergeant of arms here. If people are out of order, you call them out of order and ask them to remove.
Yes. If, if we thought they would be removed, that would be a good idea. We don't think they will be.
Isn't politics beautiful and grand? I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Christopher. I definitely feel what you're feeling, Commissioner Soder.
I don't know that you do.
Well, I'm feeling my own.
Yes.
And public comment is the time for, in essence, people to blow off steam is what it's become. And because of how people have acted over the course of the last two plus years, that has become not a conversation per se. It has become a one-way, we're yelling at you and then if you choose, you can respond to us, but we want to yell at you because we want to be heard. And that's too bad that people, that's the way communication is being done now, it seems. And I wish there was a reasonable, rational way to tamper this down. I can recall last year when people came into the meeting room and literally hijacked the meeting and, and how we responded to that. I'd now like to apologize to Commissioner Soder for not leaving the room because maybe that's one of the reasons why people think they can get away with anything they want anymore. And they can say anything and they don't care how they'll be seen. Their goal is just to hurt the office of the commissioners. And that's, that's unfortunate. And it's unfortunate that people don't realize that this is the board's meeting. This is for the three of us to discuss due to our elected positions to carry out the duties of this county. And it's unfortunate that, that some people have no at all care of how that's going to proceed. And, you know, I try to write everything everybody says down and I'd love to respond to it, but it's interesting that, for example, we have the model decommissioning plan and usually you have one public hearing and you, at the end of that, you take your testimony and your staff goes and looks up the comments and responds to those comments and you take a vote and you move on. It's one thing of the hundreds of different projects we have going on at any given time. And it gets hijacked. I, as the chair, have continued to ask for that model decommissioning plan, the public hearing to be open multiple times now and allowed people to give public testimony multiple times. And whenever, and then also written testimony. And Mr. Eldred emailed me and I, you know, took that information and we've taken all the information that has been presented by both CESE, the public, as well as, you know, the solar company, Avengrid. And when we are being demonized because we're asking questions. And it's too bad that you're being demonized for asking questions when the expectation, I guess, is that we should listen to one side and do whatever they want and not make a logical, rational decision. And that if we ask questions, we're somehow in cahoots or in the pocket of, or who knows what next you're going to be accused of. But I think all of the questions that were asked last week by my seatmates were very valid questions because we're making decisions that are going to affect that business, that company, that industry, and they have a right to be heard just as well and provide information so that we can make the logical, rational decision. And to Mr. Wagner, like Mr. Eldred, you were out of order last week. You spoke without being acknowledged by the chairman after we'd already moved on. That there, that by itself is inappropriate and disrespectful, sir. It's too bad that, you know, you want to, you know, just continue throwing stones. And it's a good thing we got all strong backs up here because you've heard from our employees, you've heard from staff, you can hear from us elected officials that the way you're going about trying to get what you want is a scorched earth policy and that will never be successful because there's nothing left at the end of it. And it's too bad. And again, the model decommissioning plan is still open because we still have questions and we're still going to come back to it. And I'm going to open it again, one more time for testimony. Because we do care and we do want to hear from the public and everyone else, even though you say we don't. With that, I think I'm going to close public comment for the day. For all who would like to tune in to our always entertaining and best watched show in Clickatack County, make sure you come back next Tuesday for public comment. Next up, we are going to move on to a public meeting to consider the boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-18. And I'm not going to read the parcel number. And Gabrielle, just so you know, when I get the mic, I hold on to it too.
So we've got a boundary line adjustment for BLA 2021-18 is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels 05152408000200 and 05152408000300 off of Knight Road. The proposed property line adjustment is located within a portion of section 24, township 5, range 15, in the Goldendale vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Sanctuaries have been obtained from the road, health and planning departments, including treasurer's office. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval. The names of the applicants are James and Patricia Ferrer.
Glad you had to read it nummy.
I had to remember to slow down so you could hear me.
Are there any questions for staff?
No, it looks general to me. Got them all flabbergasted and flustered and can't speak straight. All right.
I'm, I'm good if you're ready for a motion.
Whenever you gentlemen are ready.
Actual business. Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-18. The applicants are James and Patricia Ferrer.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You want us to sign anything while you're?
Do you do them all at once or? Oh, okay, sorry.
That's all right. You can keep talking while we're signed up.
And you still have your pens, right?
Yep. You don't get credit for those, she gets credit.
I know. We're going to have to put something on there to make sure they don't get lost.
I don't think better would have been a pen with a Snickers bar at the end of it.
We'll work on that. The next one we have is Michelle and Brian Martin. Boundary line adjustment number BLA 2022-11 is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels 06121318140100 and 06121318140200 off of Glenwood Highway. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section 13, township 6, range 12, in the Glenwood vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Sanctuaries have been obtained from the road, health and planning departments, including treasurer's office. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval for BLA 2022-11.
Questions on this one?
No questions.
It's a good day to come, huh?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-11 in the Glenwood vicinity. Applicants, Michelle and Brian Martin.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second, BLA 2022-11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies. Keep up all the good work. Next up, we're going to have a public hearing to consider the supplemental budget and amendments of the various funds and departments to the 2022 budget expenditures, the sum of $345,626. And we will begin with the brief overview, or long, I don't know if I'll give it.
Pretty brief. Pretty straightforward. We've been talking about behavioral health for a couple of months now. So back on October 4th, the board approved the development of behavioral health department as well as the creation of a new fund in order to address the mental health crisis within the Clickatack County. So budget impact to this is budget neutral. This is 100% grant funded at this point in time. This would be able, approving the supplemental budget would mean that we could start here this next week in operations for that behavioral health department.
Are you pointing at her? Okay, I am going to invite a public comment on the 2022 supplemental budget from the public. As always, you have three minutes and we will begin in the room or online. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public testimony in the room or online on the supplemental Gabrielle Gilbert.
I would suggest that you would approve this supplemental budget. And I think that the mental health of the county has been on display for generations. And so it is a county, really, the amount of grant dollars that come in or the lack of grant dollars that tend to come into this county because they're shut off, you know, you have a lot of money, dollars coming in to Clark County, to Skamania a bit, but Clickatack, you have to hustle for these dollars. And so when you do get them, applying them in ways in which the constituents benefit is vital and mental health is vital. And so I think it's a, it's a amazing opportunity that you should all vote yes on. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Is there anyone else in the room or online who would like to provide public testimony on the supplemental budget? Star six, raise your hand, turn your video on. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment, public testimony, I mean? Last chance. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the budget amendment? I am not seeing anyone. I am going to close the public testimony and ask if there are any questions from my Or clarifications? Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the supplemental budget and amendments to the various funds and departments for the 2022 budget expenditures in the sum of $345,628 as are outlined in the staff report.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve the supplemental budget and amendments for various funds and departments to the 2022 budget expenditures in the sum of $345,626. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I would just like to say that this has been one very long road to create a new department. And I would like to thank Ms. Bartley for all the time and effort you've put into this as well as the multitude of county officials and people from various departments as well as our hospitals, EMS, and everybody who's already applied for the positions. This is, this has been one, one very challenging and one very necessary and needed change. And I think everybody deserves a big old attaboy for all the work they put in.
I would agree.
Yeah. What a good Mr. Chair. And I think it illustrates the fact that while certain individuals have single issues that seem to drive their whole being, the Board of Commissioners is dealing with a very vast universe of things that are our responsibility. And this is just one of those examples of, you know, it was a huge problem that got basically dropped in, in our lap and, which would have a huge impact on, on citizens. And, you know, and I think in a, you know, it's been a long road, but it's been a very short road time-wise and it, it's amazing to me that, you know, this is November 1st and it looks like we're actually going to make it. And, and so, yeah, I would, I would concur, hats off to everybody that worked on this because this, this could have been a disaster and, and it wasn't. And again, it's just, there's all this other stuff going on. It's not just about one thing. That's a little teeny piece. And I know that will just upset those people, but it's a little teeny piece. Yes, I said it.
Davis.
Yeah, davis@clickattackcounty.org, and I know you know it because you use it all the time.
Okay, we are going to move on. We have a miscellaneous report from Scott Robinson with Abate of Washington, the Columbia Gorge chapter.
This will be more pleasant than it's been going on the last 20 minutes anyway. Paul and Keith will be more pleasant.
Yeah. I got some information I want to give you before I just turn.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you as well.
So anyway, my name's Scott Robinson. Been living here for 20 years, military veteran. I was actually the founder of the Veterans Day Parade and also the leadoff in the Vietnam Veterans Traveling Wall that came to town. So since then, I took on several other jobs and I've kind, I just finished up a state coordinator for Abate of Washington. And so I'm back in town working with the local chapter and I, I thought, boy, you know, the city of Goldendale needs something. They need an event, kind of a standout event. And I, I believe that the demolition derby on the 4th of July and a fireworks display following the demolition derby would be something that would, would be a big draw and also very good for the community. would, would be a big draw, and also very good for the community, just something kind of bringing everybody back together on the 4th of July. I've got, I, there's an estimated cost there for the, for the fireworks, and also, there's also a copy of a letter there from Rule 7, Anthony Browning, who gives us permission to have the fireworks. There'll be, there's a lot of work to be done before we get there, but one of the big things I wanted to let you guys know what we're planning on doing, I'm probably going to be applying for the lodge tax stuff, from what I, gonna have some help with the Goldendale Chamber, filling out this paperwork and whatnot. I think there's potential for, you know, a really big event here in Goldendale, it'll draw people countywide, maybe even, you know, further than that, just wanted you guys to know what's going on, pretty much it, yeah. Anybody got any questions? We are a 501(c)(4) at this time, not-for-profit organization, but we are actually in the process of changing over to 501(c)(3), just so you know that.
So, Abate is a 501(c), or your local chapter, or?
We are a statewide organization, there's 22 chapters statewide, and we do events all over the state, fundraisers and stuff like that, and raffles, and, yeah, we work with the gambling commission, they're not much fun to work with, but we abide by all the rules, you know what I'm saying?
It could be worse.
You're right, yes.
Yeah, I would just remind you that you have the county lodging tax dollars, you also have a city application for city lodging tax dollars, so you actually have two sources you can apply there. The other thing that I would throw out, depending on your group and what they want to do, is they can approach some of these evil green energy companies that love to give back to their communities, like Cypress Tricker Nables, that's always looking to pitch in and, and create a good event for the locals, so reach out to them and, and see what they're willing to do to help you too.
Absolutely. We, we plan on touching base with the grocery stores, a lot of, all the people in town, I've talked to, they're willing to step forward and help us raise the money. The, the goal is, I'm coming to you folks, and the Chamber and the city is, that once we do this event this year, we'll have enough money to play forward next year without coming back to this table here, and, yeah, that's, that's the goal, so, I think we can pull that off.
You got my support, and when it gets running, you'll have my wallet too, probably, so.
All right, well, thank you.
I'll let there's anything in there. Oh, I heard you made $90,000 a year.
I spent that all in my house in Belize.
That took.
Next question, how much do we have in that fund? Did we estimate for next year, Richard?
Right now, just above $200,000.
And do you remember what we had of just a few years ago? Because it's went up, hasn't it?
Last year, I had a range.
Okay.
It had been steadily going up, if that makes sense.
And that was, that was including losing the cities too, though, right? Or at least the city of Benjen and the city of White Salmon, I think Goldendale's been taken there.
They all have their own, yeah.
Yeah, and it's still been going up.
Correct. And that was something I was going to bring up during budget, is questioning whether we have that number in the budget accurately. Not that it matters, because I guess if you just don't spend the money, it adds into fund balance, and they'll spend it the next year.
Right, and we have, and we have been dialing it up, and then, but it's, but it's accumulating more.
Richard? Could you come forward so people online can hear you?
So, for this event, it's going to be around summertime, correct?
Richard, to the mic.
Oh, my goodness. I try to hide from public view as best I can. Actually, right now, with the, the fireworks are around 20,000, and then the demolition derby, and the setup and tear down of the fairgrounds, and bringing it back to rodeo level, there's quite a, probably 27,000 is what we've kind of figured right now.
So, for the, for the lodging tax dollars, those are typically for promotional uses only, we can't use those for any sort of capital expenditures typically, but either way, we come out with our, with the guidelines and everything like that, and we have our lodging tax advisory committee that gets together, and that's going to be first quarter of 2023. So, that gives you a good timeline on when, when, when applications need to, you know.
Right, but I'm, I'm sitting here thinking that, I mean, if a fireworks show ain't tourism, I don't know what is, because people will be coming from everywhere to watch.
Here's my card.
And it shouldn't be a capital investment either, so, God, just the fireworks alone, if they can get part of that covered.
That's going to be up to the auditors, what's going to be approved and, and disapproved, but I know that in the past for, I'll just say for rodeo, for instance, we've had them apply for some things that were kind of on the line, and then it came back that we, we couldn't do it. So, as, as we get closer to the, to our committee getting together, we'll have those guidelines out, and we can connect with you, so if, we try to work with all of our applicants to make sure that they understand what is applicable and what is not, so.
Essentially, it's no infrastructure, no beer gardens.
What's that?
It said, essentially, it's no infrastructure, you can't buy bleachers, you can't buy beer gardens, it can be used on everything else, promotion wise, but yeah, work for them, work with the auditor, make sure you get everything dialed in, because when it comes, it comes quick.
How many people do you have on your committee currently?
Actually, I'm the chairman, and there's probably about seven people right now. We're having a meeting tonight, in fact. You guys are welcome to come by, American Legion, 5:30. I'd be happy if you stopped in.
I have my own here at 6, so.
It's okay.
Any further questions?
No, I would just comment, thank you, I'm, because my first question, when I saw your original email, where it's kind of giving us heads up you were coming in, was just the fire concern and the interaction with the fire department, so you've already, you've already answered that question, and that's the big, so it's really just an issue of dollars now, is putting it together, and I will say, you know, I'm supportive of the effort, I, I see these in other communities where, you know, in, in the DOWs and Hood River and stuff where they've done things, and it's a big draw for people, that people come, that, like the ones in Hood River, like people plan their, their summer stuff, where people book the hotel, you know, because it's every year, it's not like you don't know the date, it's going to be, you know the date, it's 4th of July, and at the Best Western and stuff, people book their rooms out a year or two out, because they know they're going to have that every year, and so I know it's a, it's an economic development driver in that community, and I think it could be, it could grow into something like that here in Goldendale.
Have you, have you reached out to any other areas that do demolition derbies, and, and try to get their cost estimate from their, their groups?
Yes, I did. I don't even want, well, I'll just tell you, I called the DOWs, because I know they did, I saw their flyer, I called them up, and they said they're getting a really good deal, they get a 20-minute show for $50,000. Now, if you read that email I got, it says right on there.
Minimum, 20,000.
But ours starts at 20, and she, I'm pretty sure we're going to even get it less than that, I just, only because of Abate of Washington, the people that run the part of that, they're, they're members of Abate, and we're, we're working on that as we speak, actually.
See, that's why they charge them 50, so they can only charge you 15.
I don't know, they thought they were getting a great deal, I don't want to say anything else about that.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, of course, in supportive of it as well, I think it'll be a great thing for the community.
And also, we would like to probably incorporate it into like a beef cook-off of some kind, just something else to add to the family part of it, that's, and there's...
Like a barbecue smoker competition?
Yes, exactly, yep. Of course, they'll have to have, you know, the permits and...
So, that's, that was going to be my next thing, is you want to get started upstairs earlier rather than later on all your permits and your special use permit.
Yes.
Special permit.
Well, I'm usually an early bird, so we'll see how it works out. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Nice to see you.
Thinking about ribs right now.
Yeah.
Right, let's move into, do you guys want to do the consent agenda first, and then we can add, move into new business?
Uh, that's fine, consent agenda, pulling item number three, correct? Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with six items, we are pulling item number three for future consideration.
Well...
That was the, that was the fee, $320, they're going to get back.
That's right, okay. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with six items, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the resolution in the matter of the designation of Clickatuck County Behavioral Health Department as the provider of county-designated crisis responders, and that the individuals meet the requirements of the mental health professions as defined by RCW effective November 7th, 2022. Okay, thank you. Find the resolution. All right.
Just looking for a vote of approval on the resolution.
I think, I mean...
You've only been here 16 years, you should know.
Yes, okay, well, I've, I have, I can fake one. Mr. Chairman, we have before us a resolution in the matter of designating Clickatuck County Behavioral Health Department, these providers as county-designated crisis responders, the professional service agreements are with Jeff Albin, Tamara, I don't know if it's Little, Latall, and CJ Burns, will provide designated crisis responder services on behalf of Clickatuck County Behavioral Health. My motion is to approve the resolution and designate these folks.
I would second the motion.
The discussion, so we've got the resolution that's here, but then we have professional services agreements.
I was wondering if there was two there.
There, the, I...
They're not incorporated, they're not a sing, they're two different, oh, okay. Then I will, I will amend my motion to adopt the resolution first, in the designation of Clickatuck County Behavioral Health Department as the provider of county-designated crisis responders. And this will be replacing Skamania County as providing those, being the county design, or the Behavioral Health Department.
I would second the motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution of the designation of the Clickatuck County Behavioral Department as a provider of county-designated crisis responders.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. Now, sir, we have, which, you know, in staff's defense, there was actually a space between those. Next, we have professional service agreements before us, for the individuals to be designated crisis responders, with Jeff Albin, Tamara Little, and CJ Burns, to provide designated crisis responder services on behalf of Clickatuck County Behavioral Health. A motion would be to approve those professional service agreements.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve CJ Burns, Jeff Albin, and Tamara Little as designated crisis responders in Clickatuck County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
That's good, we're starting out with three.
Actually, four, because we have Lacy as well.
Oh, yeah, we already have, we already have.
Is this airport policy statement, is this just a yearly ongoing, I don't remember seeing it last year, so...
Uh, the last one, was it 2017? So, if you'd like, you can see it, it's the, the...
It's quite lengthy.
Well, I read it.
It's the disadvantaged business DBE enterprise program. So, we have to, in, in essence, we're required to have this DBE program in place so that we can get federal grants and awards. It's one of those things that the feds require you to do, one of like 30. It's right here, if you want.
I was going to say, because for some reason, it's in there. Prosecutor have time to look it over and...
But are we on a time, are we on a time crunch? Is there a...
Yeah, there's, there's kind of a time crunch on this, because they've got to get it from us, to, to the city, and then it's just a repeat, so, precision approach. Does it, it's a three-year...
So, that looks...
Yeah, where were those? Sure they are.
Yeah, I will defer to historical knowledge sitting next to you.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I don't see any, that, this is just a repeat of what we've done in the past. Okay. Mr. Chair, we have before us, this would be authorization for the chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign the joint Columbia Gorge Regional Airport Policy Statement with the city of the DOWs, as the owners of the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport, that we have established the disadvantaged business enterprise program in compliance with all applicable laws. My motion would be to authorize the chair to sign that assurance, that we are in compliance with 49 CFR Part 26, as we have been all along, I'm sure.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to authorize the chair's signature of the DBE with regards to Transportation 49 CRP/26. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Do you want to pay the bills?
Yeah.
Let's see. I did want to look before, can we differ on that? I had one, maybe you did, because I know you looked at them, that the reimbursements for the, at the Quality Inn and Suites for all these rooms, I was going to pull that out.
I have not looked at the...
Oh, okay, that was the only one I had a question on, so before I'm comfortable, I'm sure...
Is it the one in DOWs, or...?
No, I think it's here in Goldendale, let me see, 83685, oh, look at that, it's right here. 36...
What department?
Well, it's the fair, oh, so these must be... Is it, we put, is it like the, the... So, these must be, like we have... Are these folks that are, yeah, I don't know, maybe when we have folks, you know, that are doing the stuff at the fair, that, that part of the agreement is that we put them up.
Contractors and now...
Yeah, and that stuff that we put them in, because it is, it's from last, it's from the rodeo, it's, yeah, it's the rodeo clowns and stuff, I'm assuming. I just was curious, I had not seen that before, we don't usually, aren't buying hotel rooms here. Here. I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's still, it just caught my eye. Oh, it says Judge and Entertainment Lodging, so that is what it's for, okay, it was in the cover sheet. I'm good, then. That was the only one I had a question on. So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable, warranting the amount of $223,990.38 for the date ending October 31st, 2022.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to pay the bills, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is Greg on for the finance committee?
I have not seen him, I did send him an email.
Okay. Well, we'll sign some documents while you try to get home.
Yeah. Got stuff to do here.
Do you guys have much on the way for? Okay, pending?
China, I wanna talk about Krista's employee battery storage, and then we will need executive for the landfill contract.
We got a couple of. Are you gonna, do you need the prosecuting attorney here?
Who are?
For anything on the executive? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um.
And I do believe the PA was gonna come over for executive at the end.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
No.
Let you know what's on my agenda.
Okay, yeah.
You can take it whenever you wanna take it.
Um. Since he's on the way, would you like to do your battery storage?
Um, let's start with the Krista one.
Oh, okay, let's start with the Krista.
Assessor asked for an employee. Originally, I was a no, and now I am a yes. Do you want more than that?
Yep. If possible.
Through conversations, I do not feel it is a right of me to punish a department when I believe we have other departments with excess employees that this county does not do a very good job overseeing. So, I'm not gonna punish other departments. Oh, and she gave up a vehicle, so one of her vehicles will be coming into the fleet program.
So she didn't need it?
Hardly uses it, but is willing to test out sharing it. But that isn't have anything to do with me changing my mind on the employee.
Can I do that? Wait, am I supposed to sign here or here on these? Well, cause the next one's different. So this one shows here, this one shows.
Now, if they're wanting money back, it's down there, if not, then it's up there. Request for advanced travel.
Yeah, so.
It's up there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at it in the right spot.
I don't, I think most do not ask for.
Yeah. Don't know if I've ever come across that.
Hold number three out too for.
Oh, thank you. Any?
Yeah, I mean, I would, cause I wasn't sure how much my, since I was participating in that discussion via a very sketchy internet connection. Yeah, I mean, I was, I'm actually in favor of restoring the dollars, I know it's a, it's a budget issue for us, but I don't think it's, I mean, and that's how I look at it, it's a restoration. It was, it was a position, it was an FTE that historically had been in the department, and then it was removed, and I, and it was removed really at the, when the, you know, we were looking for ways to streamline and cut, and it was, it was basically volunteered by the assessor with the, you know, not dissimilar from what the clerk did too, where, you know, and said, you know, I'm gonna try to make this work, but I don't know, and I think this was the assessor coming back saying it doesn't really work, you know, I, I need this, the department needs the FTE restored, I'm supportive of that, I don't think, you know, there are, we are doing parcel segreg, or not, we are, they're doing parcel segregation all the time, we have more parcels every, all the time, and every time we create a new parcel, there's workload that goes with that, because you've gotta do an assessment on it, you know, there's a, there's a thing that goes with that, and again, while I'm certainly sensitive to our plight, I don't think that had, had the department not volunteered to reduce the staff person a couple of years ago, it wouldn't be one of the positions that we were looking at, and so I think we need to, I think we need to find it elsewhere, as Commissioner Christopher has indicated. I don't know if I'm quite on board with the, we have other departments that are unmanaged, and we can find it elsewhere, but I think.
I could point to two of them, but you probably didn't want me to say it publicly.
I would prefer not, although, although after one-thirty today, that's, you can say whatever you want, sir. So. Yeah.
I know you get accused of saying you'd never change your mind, and, and you're bullheaded and everything, the fact that you've changed your mind says quite a lot. My concern is always the budget and where we're gonna find the money, and as long as we can find the money.
Right.
I'll be in support of it, but I think we can't afford that, you know, another FTE that's gonna, every year, continue to take us further down that hole. As much as I want, but if we're willing to work together to try to find those dollars, I'm absolutely in support of it, we just have to find the dollars. Unless you're saying that you wanna get rid of employee one place in order to bring this person on.
We need to have a discussion about oversight of public works eventually, whether that's this board or the next board, so. Since it is employees, you could talk executive session if you'd want to, because I don't know, this one needs to go back today, there's missing signatures.
Did I, did I give it to him at all?
You got it all, but he only signed one of the documents.
Oh, maybe I don't wanna sign it.
Okay. I don't think we have an action item on it, I think it's, it's aspirational for budget discussions.
Right.
But I think that's, thank you for bringing it up, sir. With that, let's, let's move on to the finance committee update from our illustrious finance committee chair.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The finance committee did meet last Friday, we had, a lot, it's a little blurry, I gotta put my glasses on. We had a discussion about, we didn't have a lot of items on the agenda, and we had a few things, Jen was not there as staff, so we kicked a few things to the next meeting. But one of the items that we did discuss that's been out there is the, the fund balance, or the cash requirements for Fund one oh seven, which is emergency management, and, you know, what, where it goes, I know that the last couple of months, my office has been called about potentially cash. When we get to the very end of the month and we reconcile, there's usually money in the fund, and so I know that the physical manager has had discussions with staff on what to do and how to maybe try to rectify that. Again, she wasn't at the meeting, so it was a good discussion with the treasurer, the auditor, and the board chair. And out of the meeting, Brenda agreed that she would schedule a meeting with her and Nicole, who is her senior accountant, and Jen would try to meet with Jeff and Debbie, I believe, and I think they were going to include me, I don't know if I needed to go or not, but that we're gonna try to have a meeting, excuse me, and discuss maybe ways to try to deal with, because it sounds like there's staff being moved from one fund to another that's taking staff time in order to do that, to try to get them to account, a little bit, because our system doesn't allow us to move people and allocate benefits, so they were trying to do that. So they were gonna go meet with them and then report back to the finance committee at the next meeting, that was what we decided. The landfill third quarter deposit did get deposited in October, it was, I'm not gonna know the number exactly off my head, about a hundred and twenty thousand, I think, short. That amount was reduced, what we do is we do an estimate of where those dollars come into, so the fourth quarter deposit was, the general fund amount was less than a hundred and twenty, so every other fund got the, the allocation.
Their allocations, but, but what, that was a hundred thousand dollars less on the year, correct?
Correct.
Not on just that quarter.
Right, but that hundred thousand on the whole year all came out of the general, of the current expense.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it rolls all the way through until the fourth, the only real decision to make in that is in the third quarter money that gets deposited in October of where that's gotta go, if it's over, it's usually an easy decision, but it's under, but typically, we reduce the general fund allocation for that. And I, for example, I know interest, and I haven't had a chance to look at the interest income, but I know we are getting additional dollars in interest income, which is going into current expense, so, I, I mean, we'll have to see where it ends at the very end, that's how we've balanced it traditionally, so, that we're all on the same page. We did have an update on mental health, and Commissioner Anderson reported that Skamania will be done on November seventh with their function, and that will come on to the county, so that was an update to all the folks that were there as we're moving through this process, which is next week. We did have a budget recap, Brenda was not able to attend the, some of the additional budget sessions, so we reviewed those there, and we talked about the sheriff's second round, the WSU second round, and the assessor's second round, and just kinda brought Brenda up to speed, there was really nothing additionally talked about at the meeting that was not talked about during the budget sessions. We had staff reports, Commissioner Anderson stated that the landfill negotiations are nearing completion, I did ask if what the steps were next, and whether it would be reviewed by an attorney. Commissioner Anderson said that was the plan of how they were gonna move forward with that. I updated the group on, there is a tax, we have a refund for excise tax that's been submitted, a fairly large one per portions of the SDS transfer, and so I think there might be some money that would come out, there were some parcels that, I think in the way I re, and again, these are dealt with by the Department of Revenue, so all I do is get the paperwork and send it to the Department of Revenue, they go through and do all the, say whether it's gonna be refunded or not. But it looks like the claim is, is that some of the parcels were owned by some of the owners, so if you're transferring it from one name, like into a trust, you don't pay excise tax, like you're selling it to yourself, to your trust sometimes, and so I think that that's what they're trying to figure out, but again, I turn that over, it, there, if it's a refund, there could be some dollars, but I don't think it's gonna be, you know, that's not the whole transaction, it's looked like it was a very small portion of them, but I just wanna make sure that we're aware, because that would reverse some revenue, but I'm also pretty sure that it won't be, I won't say I'm pretty confident, but I'm, I do believe it probably will not be a two thousand and twenty-two activity, so if we do have to refund some money, it could be in January of two thousand and twenty-three, just because I, it will be interesting to see if you are, well, how quickly this will get resolved. And when I know more, I'll advise, but I, I don't really know anything other than I had submitted it to Department of Revenue. And then the, the auditor updated, she is working on a DOL audit and finishing the SAO, state auditor's annual audit. We did set the meeting schedule for the next two meetings, because there are holidays and such in line, so we'll meet once in November and once in December on the twenty-eighth, which is a Monday, and on the sixteenth, which is a Friday. That's what I have in my notes.
Any questions?
Jeff, just a little heads up from our discussion this morning, we were having a discussion with the delegation about use of the whole, we are in settlement dollars to fund, you know, cause that's, that has strings on that, as far as what those dollars could be sent in, it was, we thought it was the appropriate place was to send that conversation to the finance committee.
Right.
Your brain trust of all things with.
Oh, add that.
And the auditor and the chair.
It's just nice to have a discussion with all three, you know, that way there we can, if there's a bars conversation, or however it goes, not a bar, a bars.
The other thing that you should be aware of with that is, we're supposed to be getting the first payment, which is about five hundred thousand dollars, the first part of December, so if you see a little fluff in the account, we're gonna probably end up having to set up a special fund for that.
How does that get to us, as state allocation, or?
State allocation, yeah, but I don't.
So that was kind of a question, it's like, yeah, where, you know, is that, is that money, you know, are you gonna have to always keep it in his own fund? So that's why it's, needs to go to you folks.
Okay, we'll do some work on it and figure out what we need to do.
Yeah, it'd be a nice surprise if you, you know, there's extra half a million dollars just shows up, of course, that happens to you all the time.
Well, I don't know if it happens to me right now, we have been.
I don't know, I paid my.
I, I was just gonna say, we have been, yeah, neck deep in tax collections, so we, we were very busy in the office, but I do believe that it wasn't as busy as it's been in other times in the office, just because we have so many forms of payment now, where we have electronic payments, and, you know, we still have a handful of folks, and they're excited to be able to come in and pay their taxes in person, so, and usually on the last day, so we're, we're usually pretty busy, so.
The only thing I'm gonna comment, cause this is the second year.
Mm-hmm.
I've used the electronic data.
Mm-hmm.
And I have to, like, write myself a note, because I run into the same thing every time, that you go through, enter the information, the amount, which I have to look up myself, and if you don't put add to cart.
Yes.
It doesn't do it.
Right.
And you go down to the next screen, and then it's like, you know, you go pay, and it's like, you, it's.
There's nothing.
Balance is zero.
Yes.
And it's like, oh, yay, my balance is zero. And there's nothing wrong, I mean, it's a perfectly acceptable system, but I don't know why.
It is not intuitive.
I'm not shopping on Amazon, I'm not shopping on add to cart.
That, that is, I agree, I agree, that is, that is, that is an item, that add to cart part, and that's a lot of times, we get a lot of calls on that, where they're like, what's going on? And we're like, you just have to hit the add to cart, okay, and again, I think because people are paying taxes, they're not thinking they're on Amazon or something.
Know how to add to cart.
Yeah, no. Says the Amazon driver and the UPS driver, but yeah, no, it's.
Other than that, it was.
It is a good process, and, and we, we do like that method, and, and we do like being able to provide that, and there's a lot of.
I kept my confirmation screen on my machine.
Have you just threw?
I take a picture. It says it's in the email.
No, so far, it's worked pretty good, I will say that there are a lot, there was some other counties that were larger, we didn't really have as much trouble with it yesterday, but there are some larger counties that did have a lot of trouble with the credit, cause a lot of folks use point and pay for, I mean, a, a very large percentage of treasures in Washington State do. Yeah, they were, they, they sent out a collection sheet, like in one day, I think they collected eighty million dollars in credit card transactions, that, across the state of Washington, by the way.
Do all those have a fee associated?
I'm sure they do.
Eighty million dollars, got three percent hit.
No, cause, no, cause that's not, no, cause some of them are a dollar fifty for like an E-transact, uh, E-check. And some of them, the debit card is a lower fee, and the credit card is a higher fee.
That is, cause it gave me my options, I'm like.
That's the one thing I really like about that site, too.
Dollars. Yeah, I don't want it.
Yeah, but I do like that, where it does lay it really very clearly out in the very top, like, these are your choices of. Yeah, but I do like that, where it does lay it really very clearly out in the very top, like, these are your choices of how you can pay. And, you know, I mean, a stamp's sixty cents now, I think, or something, so. We get a lot of folks that use the e-check.
And having to walk in to make sure they hand stamped, you have the wrong postmark.
And if you're lucky in Clicktack County, I think there's only two remaining post offices that are open from eight or nine to five. Most post offices in our rural communities are open maybe from eleven to two, or who knows what. Most of them are closed by two or two thirty.
Well, the drive into Goldendale will definitely make up the difference, whatever that debit.
That's why it's worth a dollar fifty.
Exactly. All right.
No, no, it was last, no, midnight last night. I was wondering about that, is it midnight or is it close of business?
We would take the online payments at midnight.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't wanna wake up at eleven.
And the question is, you know, I've never checked to see, some of those platforms are east coast or west coast, I don't know which one ours is.
Okay.
All the challenges we have with the digital age.
Yeah, any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Ending. Does anybody have anything else for pending?
I think he had a, still had a, his batteries.
Oh, the batteries.
So, not that I'm terribly worried that we'll ever get permitted and built for batteries in this county, but it doesn't mean I'm not worried that somebody can go to FSAC and get permitted for batteries and then install them five years from now when it gets cheaper. With no real oversight on where they went, where they're placed, or what the population is around, how big of a facility. So with that, I think we need to do our due diligence. And send this off to the Planning Commission for citizen comment and whatnot. So with that, my motion is to make a moratorium on the accumulation of more than twenty-five hundred pounds of lithium batteries located with, within five miles of any property zoned with any form of residential or rural zoning, so that the county can establish regulations, including but not limited to area population density criteria, to ensure the safe sighting and location of large-scale lithium battery storage.
Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can have discussion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second discussion.
Some questions, as far as, you know, cuz I keep saying this about, so the twenty-five hundred, where did you, I mean, the, where did the numbers come from?
The number came off, that was the amount that the federal government uses to create regulation.
Okay.
It was actually a.
That's like the threshold for regulatory.
Twenty-five hundred threshold and a five thousand threshold.
Okay.
So, the twenty-five hundred pound threshold would exempt Teslas? No?
Tesla's only weigh four hundred and nineteen pounds.
Yeah, so the twenty-five hundred pound would exempt Teslas.
Or a car dealership with twelve cars. Whatever.
Okay. And then.
Yeah, I don't have it up here anymore.
So I guess the other thing is.
We'll have lithium ion battery storages in emergency management, where they have their battery racks in there, but they don't have twenty-five hundred pounds of batteries.
So, so I guess my thing is, is it says the moratorium on the accumulation of more than twenty-five hundred pounds. So to me, accumulation, it would be, is, is you'd need to add up all of the lithium ion batteries within five miles of a property zoning.
That's not the interpretation of how it's written. The accumulation is because they may be new batteries in a stellar facility, or they could be old damaged batteries, like, you know, some people collect scrap tires and then it becomes a problem. Some people collect scrap lithium ion batteries and then they start battery fires. So it can't just be an energy facility, because it could actually be a scrap facility. Hence the word accumulation.
Do we know that now, I mean, I mean, this is principally about solar facilities, but, but it has other, as you said, people could, do we know now that you, can you accu? I don't know, is there already regulation on if I wanna accumulate? You know, I mean, we have things on junkyards, on, yeah, I don't know, that's what I'm.
I haven't seen anything on accumulation in this county, I haven't seen anything pretty much on lithium ion battery, lithium batteries, period, in this county.
And then, part two of my question, why five miles? Why not four, why not six, why not a mile?
Because I.
Seven.
Because I don't know the answer on how far a toxic cloud will blow, at what speed and what radius. So I'm erring on the side of caution. When whatever group hears this and studies and does the research on how fast a toxic cloud goes, they might decide it's two and a half miles, or might decide it's a half mile. They might decide it's seven. So the honest answer is, I don't know, because I don't know the data.
Okay. And then your statement about FSAC as far as, say we took action on this today and we did a moratorium, would that necessarily preclude if I'm a solar company and I wanna go to FSAC to get a permit to do that? What impact would the moratorium have on?
Well, the more.
I know, I know on the surface they say, oh, we have to consider local land use zoning, but I don't.
Through my conversations with FSAC, they will not take action on a project if there is a moratorium and you're actually working towards updating your code. If, if we do a moratorium and it sits there for two years, they're eventually just gonna issue you a permit. If you're actually working on creating some kind of ordinance for battery storage, they will, if the permit is already in, they will apply the regulations that were in place when the permit was turned in, which is none. If the permit isn't turned in as of today and say they turn in the permit tomorrow, the company will not get battery storage until we've come up with an answer on what we want and where we want battery storage. Which I'm not saying battery storage is the devil, I'm not saying battery storage is all bad. There's, there's perfectly fine places for battery storage, but I would argue that that's probably not in downtown Goldendale. There's also residential communities that have a high population, and I would also argue the risks outweigh the benefit. And I'd also argue that out in the tumbleweeds, if there's two houses and they're a mile and a half away and the study shows that the toxic cloud distributes in a mile, then maybe that's different. But in all reality, we don't know, because we've never had a group look at it.
Are you, have you looked, is there any federal studies or anything that's been published, peer reviewed, that, that says, you know, you know, how, what the distance and, and windage and all that is on, you know, whatever the toxic cloud is?
I'm not an expert and I did not want to accumulate data that could be one way or the other way. I wanted to leave that to the group, that whoever will be seeing this and hearing this to not have my biased information that I happen to pick off the internet, one way or the other.
And who do you feel is the right group to do this?
I would say it would be the Planning Commission, but I think the Planning Commission needs potentially guidance, education and training before they adopt this.
So do you, do you feel then that the EIS process and the scoping and the comments would not adequately answer all of these questions?
Absolutely not.
Why is that?
Well, it might answer the questions, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna give you the remedy.
Well, I mean, if there is environmental harm or the potential for environmental harm, you have to mitigate that or not do it, unless it's found that there is no environmental harm. Right?
Yes, then I'm gonna refrain from answering the question. Cuz I think it might. I'm just gonna refrain from answering that question.
Do you have any more?
Uh, would be, I mean, I think the issue that's in front of us right now is about a moratorium, not about the, you know, do we think batteries are good or bad or any of that stuff? That would, that would be determined, is to be determined in the future. I would say for me, in keeping with, I don't like making decisions based on, you know, without having a chance to. I, I think we need to give the planning department, I mean, for one thing, is like, I'm not sure what the ramifications of doing, if I, we just said, there's a moratorium today, I, we, I've never supported, even when we adopted the planning moratorium before, there was, it didn't just fall out of the sky and we did it. We, there was some, there was some process to it, where we talked about it, we talked to staff about it. We understood, or at least the majority of us believed at the time we implemented it, that it was, it was warranted and appropriate. And so I'm not saying no, I, I can't vote for this today. I wanna have a chance to have a discussion and let the planning staff weigh in on this, as far as what, what would this look like if we did this? And what is the process as far as if we, if we do it, who do we, does it go to the planning department to come up with, you know? And as we know from the past, if we have a moratorium, we have to have, we'd have to have a public hearing as far as within the sixty days as to why we did it. And then do we continue it, do we not, what do we do? So I'm not saying no, I'm just saying I can't vote for this today to take any action, yea or nay on it. So I guess in, in that circumstance, it would be no today on the motion.
I wouldn't take action on a motion that I can't see a map of. And it says, so I'm, I, I'm not saying no either. I'm saying I, first of all, I don't like moratoriums in the first place, but I've been very clear about that. But I'm also hearing what you're saying about FSAC and, and their statements. And I think it'd be great to, to get that in writing from them, if we can. And then the property zone with any form of residential or rural zoning. It says zone twice. If it's zoned with any form of residential zoning, that means that residential is a permitted outright use? Is that what you're saying? Or are you saying R1, R2?
R3.
Or rural center?
Do you think it says rural in zoning, which there's about five of them? Do you think it says residential in the zoning, which there's about four of them, I just didn't feel like listing.
Okay.
I think.
I think it's good to be specific.
Very good to be specific and to have a map. And so if we're gonna talk to the planning department, that would be great to, to have a map of that, of what you're actually, the area that's encompassed in this. I think we'd also need to be clarify on the accumulation, you're saying the accumulation of more than twenty-five hundred pounds of lithium batteries on a parcel? Or on a project or an aggregate? So, just something to come up with.
For me, my motion's on the floor, either approve it or deny it, move on.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what you were, what you were intending with the, with the motion, so that then we can have the discussion with the planning department and everything else. This is the only time we get to talk about it, so I'm trying to, are, were you saying like per parcel? In aggregate, what, what were you, what were you meaning by that?
Well, I need my chi at this moment. To me, it's really obvious, maybe it needs to go to legal review before the word accumulation. To me, it doesn't matter whether it's battery storage for a solar facility, battery storage of some hokey joe guy in his garage that's collecting lithium ion phones. The accumulation is, is in one spot.
In one spot.
In one general, I mean, you could make it per parcel for all I care, but it's, it's, you know, it doesn't mean accumulation is countywide and we can't have more than twenty-five hundred pounds in the county. So I'm open to interpretation, I'm open to, you know.
And just wanted to clarification.
Pick the words apart all you want, it's, you know. The answer's still no, quit picking the words apart, is all I'm saying.
I mean, you didn't bring it forward for no reason. You want, if you're, you wanna have the moratorium, then this is what, you know, we need the answers to in order to act.
We need the answers because I think this board is failing the citizens of this city, because they are not acting. Period, there you go.
Okay. I guess, is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Okay, is there anything else on the that anybody else, any, either of my seatmates have to bring up on board pending?
Just executive with landfill contract.
Okay, and so, how long do you think?
Five minutes, just kind of the final update.
Do we have, just in, no, would be if, do we have any open session stuff? Prior, cuz it's nice to just like, you know, like we normally do, where we just have the executive session at the end, where we sign off, we're done. So there will be no more action taken today.
I would say potentially there is an action that's gonna need to be taken afterwards.
Oh, okay.
And, and that, that would be if the board chose to remit it to council. We would need to take a vote or an action on that, I would, I would assume.
What?
What?
I don't know, we would need to. We could always do that next week too, right? I just.
So if we were gonna refer something to council, does that, we have to, that has to be on the record, on any item? I wouldn't think so, I think we could do that if.
Okay. Prosecuting attorney, Canell, do you have anything for open session? Any updates? Okay. I've got one for the executive session as well, but it's under the same, so we'll do fifteen minutes to start with. Okay, so we are going to enter into executive session under forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, dash, D, for fifteen minutes. We will be closing down the Zoom for the day, we will not be taking any actions upon entering. I would like to thank everyone for signing on, as always, to government happening in real life in Clicktack County. We will see everybody back here next Tuesday. Thank you all.